So, welcome to our work session and first and foremost, I want to thank our partners in economic development for joining us this evening. The opportunities for the public to access and participate in the hybrid meeting are posted on the Alamo County website, on the Planning Commission homepage, and on the Alamo County calendar. Participation will include the opportunity to comment on those matters, which comments from the public will be received. And so with that, I'll call this work session to order, and let's establish a quorum. Madam Clerk, would you mind calling the roll?
Yes. Mr. Moore.
Present.
Mr. Murray.
Here.
Mr. Claiborne.
Present.
Mr. Carazana.
Here.
Mr. Missile.
Here.
Mr. Vivins.
Hello, I'm here.
And Ms. Firehawk is joining us via Zoom.
Sure. Thank you so much, Commissioner Firehawk. Are you able to share your reason in general for your absence and your general location?
Yes, I am present in Alamo County, Virginia, and Howardsville, Virginia. And my reason for participating remotely is due to an illness in my family, so I have to stay close for caretaking.
All right, we wish all the well wishes that we can to your loved one, and thank you for joining us. Is there a motion from the floor to accept Commissioner Firehawk's remote participation?
I'm moved to accept Karen Firehawk.
Okay, second. All right, any further discussion? All right, hearing none. Madam Clerk, could you call the roll?
Yes. Mr. Moore.
Hi.
Mr. Murray.
Hi.
Mr. Claiborne.
Hi.
Mr. Missile.
Hi.
Mr. Carazana.
Hi.
Mr. Vivins.
Hi.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Other matters not listed on the agenda from the public, and for those who are joining us, just a gentle reminder that we will not be taking public comment in terms of the presentation and work session that we'll be undertaking. But this is a time, if you like to say anything, that you're more than welcome to. So, anyone in the audience with other matters not listed on the agenda from the public? Okay, see, no one rushed the podium. Is there anyone online, Madam Clerk?
No, sir, there isn't.
All right, thank you. Moving on to consent agenda, I do not believe there are any items on the consent agenda, so we can go ahead and bypass that, and we will move into the work session. So with that, I'll ask for Mr. Newberry to join us, and we look forward to the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. See if I can get the presentation to load up here. All right. Well, good afternoon. My name is JT Newberry, and I'm currently the interim director of Economic Development. And I'm excited to be here with my team today to provide an overview of economic development. My understanding is that the commission will be soon reviewing the updated chapter of the Economic Development chapter in the AC44 update. So today seemed like a timely opportunity to talk about what we've been up to. So first, I'd like to introduce my team. With me today is Deputy County Executive Trevor Henry and Assistant County Executive Emily Kilroy. Ashley Hernand Arena, our Business Development Manager, unfortunately had to go homesick today, but I will be referring to her, I think, throughout the presentation. She's a key member of our team. And I'd also like to introduce the newest member of our team, Liz Hatcher, who's with us right behind us. And I think in addition to that core team that works with me in the Economic Development Office, a phrase that's often talked about is economic development as a team sport. And so I want to take an opportunity to talk about some of the internal partners that we have within the building that we work with very often. First would be Andy Herrick and his colleagues in the County Attorney's Office. A lot of our work is based in performance agreements with requires a lot of legal review. We also work closely with community development, finance, facilities, and environmental services. So they're a key part of our team. We could not do what we do without their help. It also raises the external partners that we work with. We'll talk more about this later under Goal Six. But there's a number of just tremendous organizations that are doing really meaningful work in our community in this area. And we're lucky to be able to partner with them on these goals adopted by the community and Project Enable. And so we'll talk more about that later. There's also public sector entities at the regional and state level that are key partners to what we do. So we have kind of two presentations for you today. The first will be about 20 slides, and I'll go through the first six goals, and then Emily Kilroy will take over for Goal Seven. We'd like to take your questions at that point before we bring it, before we turn it over to Deputy County Executive Trevor Henry to talk about Rivanah Futures, one of the most significant projects the county's undertaken in recent history. So just to give a little bit of a background and kind of breadcrumbs to how we got here today. The Economic Development Office wasn't formally created until 2015, but the Board was, the Board of Supervisors was putting resources to the side in the early aughts, the mid aughts, putting money aside, recognizing that there was going to be projects that they would like to undertake and making sure that there were resources available for it. In the middle of 2017, and I should have started by saying, a lot of this history is available on the first pages. I provided a bound copy of Project Enable for you to take home and to put you to bed at night. So in mid-2017, I think a really key aspect of our history is when the Planning Commission, the Board of Supervisors, and our Economic Development Authority came together to adopt guiding principles. Those were key for developing the rest of Project Enable, which you find on the subsequent pages in your bound booklet. So we, staff took about six months or so to develop the goals, objectives, and strategies we'll talk about today. The Board formally accepted that at the end of 2018. We had a little less than 18 months until the pandemic hit. So in March of 2020, we really had to pause our efforts on Project Enable and look at something we ended up calling a business continuity strategy. So that's where we were pivoting from all the goals and things that we'll talk about today to really just baseline, secure the foundation sorts of efforts. So one of the things our office was really involved in was distributing support money throughout the community. We distributed over $5 million with the help of our partners and support from the Board of Supervisors to organizations in the community that were providing critical services. So as the pandemic began to wane, then we could get back to Project Enable. And I'm happy to say that, you know, our community is somewhat insulated from many of the economic shocks that impact the world. They still affect us, but not as much as other places. And so we've had, I think, significant progress on achieving many of the goals that we'll talk about. And then we just end this slide by trying to root it back again. The whole conversation today is really meant in preparation for what will the Economic Development Chapter in the new comp plan say? The Board was very clear that all of our work was to be consistent with the comprehensive plan. And, you know, it will be an important part of our work going forward as we work under AC44. So I'll start by going through each of the first six goals. And much like the comp plan, we tried to order our goals in some order of priority. And so we start with our Business Retention and Expansion Program. This is a fundamental service of every Economic Development Office in the country. This is where we're going out and meeting with businesses, finding out what their challenges are, and trying to come up with customized solutions to help them overcome those. We have a specific position in the office dedicated specifically for this purpose. That's Ashley's role. And she and I have had a lot of great experiences going out into the community and figuring out what are the things that businesses are really struggling with. For an example of BRE, I felt, you know, Willow Tree hits across a number of different goals, but primarily I wanted to talk about, you know, this was a company that was at risk of leaving our community. They had opportunities in North Carolina, Ohio, Colorado. Excuse me. And so it was through our MOU with the city that they knocked on our door and said, hey, this company's thinking about leaving. Is there any place that the county can help them land? And so we undertook the public-private partnership that resulted in the redevelopment of Woolen Mills. And, you know, this company's now thriving. You probably heard in the not-too-distant past that they were purchased for over $1 billion. They're now over 300 employees. Their parent company, which is Canadian, has really encouraged them to continue to do what they do best, continue investing here, continue growing here. And from all of our conversations with them, they intend to do so. Goal Two is improving the business climate, and this is really trying to get at addressing controllable barriers. Two companies that really exemplify this goal would be Bonmos on Pantops and then Castle Hill Gaming in Stonefield. And so I'll talk about those briefly for just a moment. Bonmos was thriving in our community, received investment from major companies like Hershey and Domino Sugar, and they were looking for where they could do their next expansion and ultimately landed at the State Farm Building, but not without significant challenges. The owner of that building was not interested in leasing space of less than at least 100,000 square feet, and Bonmos was really looking for only about 50,000. The zoning of the site required a special exception, which to complete R and D activities, there was a maximum of 4,000 square feet permitted, and the Board authorized the special exception for them to exceed that. I'm happy to say they are thriving there. They've invested, you know, well over $25 million in that site. They continue to grow. They continue to execute on their plans for national and international growth. And so they're headquartered right here in the county. Castle Hill Gaming was a company that was located further up Route 29, and they were looking for a place within an opportunity zone. The county has two opportunity zones, and through a connection to a developer that was going to build just a residential site, we were able to have a conversation and say, hey, look, if you were willing to build a first floor of non-residential, we know a tenant that is creditworthy that would be interested in your space. And so through making that connection, that facilitated a height special exception to go up another floor. And so now there's a headquarters for, Castle Hill Gaming produces gaming machines that are located throughout the United States. Some of the jobs that are located here, I think, are really interesting. It's things like artists, mathematicians, as well as coders and things like that. So they're currently, you know, contributing to that daily population within Stonefield and that midweek commercial activity for their business. Goal Three is the longest and most dense goal in the plan. And a few of the things, I won't hit on all the objectives, but a few of them that I wanted to touch on, you'll hear more about later tonight, which is North Fork. A specific strategy in our plan is to support North Fork's success. And so on the right-hand side of the screen is the beginning of the extension of Lewis and Clark Drive. And some of the things where we were involved with that was just trying to expedite the permitting to get that project, get the shovels in the ground, get that project moving. Earlier this year, we were awarded, in concert with the UVA Foundation, a $3 million grant from the Virginia, from the Economic Development Partnership, the State Economic Development Agency. And so we're looking to prepare a little over 30 acres for an economic development prospect. The other two companies that I'd like to mention are related to Target Industries, our biotech and agribusinesses. So Potter's Craft Cider has benefited from multiple expansions that were supported and then matched at the local level. They have certainly their tasting room, you may be familiar with down Route 29 South, but they also have a new production facility on Broadway Street. They are expanding production. They're distributing across the Mid-Atlantic and even further west. They're doing extremely well. That's another example of a company that was at risk of leaving our community without support. And then the middle company, AgroSpheres, this is an example of commercialized intellectual property that's spurring out of the University of Virginia. And so the two gentlemen flanking our supervisors and the governor are the co-founders of this company. They have an environmentally friendly pesticide that has the potential to change the world. They've got significant investment from companies like Bayer that are helping them execute on their plans. Another objective within this goal I wanted to mention, a big part of Project Enable was getting tools in the toolbox. We didn't have any economic development policies at all before Project Enable was adopted. And so Potter's Craft, AgroSpheres, and many others have benefited from us developing policy, providing certainty to businesses that are facing tough business decisions around where they want to invest next and whether or not the county can be a durable partner to them. So Goal Four is really fun. It's all about public-private partnerships. Two projects that you may be familiar with are Barnes Lumber and Alamo Marl Business Campus. In the case of Barnes Lumber, we're utilizing financing tools like a synthetic TIF to help offset some of the developers' investment there. Likewise, we're doing the same thing at Alamo Marl Business Campus. Our contributions are contributing to the built environment. They're securing public elements that have been requested through the comp plan process. So as you think about the AC44 update and other chapters, we look to the comp plan to figure out what are those elements that can be included in a performance agreement that we can help secure through our offices' efforts. Goal Five talks about educating the community. We found through the development of Project Enable that many members of our community misunderstood what the intent of economic development was and what our goals were going to be. So a big part of what we do is just trying to get the word out. Picture in the top right-hand corner is Ashley talking about our Buy Local program. If you flip through your bound version of Project Enable, you found a Buy Local sticker. That's for free. That's a present you can take. We utilize LinkedIn for a lot of our social media presence. We do print stories through publications like Alamo Marl Magazine. The other thing that I think is important to note is we developed a standalone economic development website. You all have probably heard that site selection, as businesses are looking at expansion, can often better be described as site elimination, where you have people who are doing research on your community and trying to figure out if they might be an appropriate place for that expansion and without ever talking to anybody at all. So we have this website up to help market our community, not necessarily to people who are outside, but even businesses that are looking to expand right here. So Goal Six, and this is the last goal that I'll talk about, is about partnerships. Our county executive often talks about partnerships, and I would say it's an essential part of what we do. Every single organization you see on the screen here is one that we have a financial relationship with to achieve a goal or strategy in Project Enable. And as I said at the beginning, we could not accomplish a quarter of what we're trying to do without their help. Partnerships are not easy. They require compromise and give and take and a lot of time and input. But I would argue that it's been worth it in each of these instances. And if anyone has questions about any of these, we can talk more about those. I will turn it over now to Assistant County Executive Emily Kilroy, and then we'll take questions.
I'm stuck on, is it evening yet or is it still afternoon? Hello, Emily Kilroy. I'm going to talk a little bit about Goal Seven. And the reason that JT asked me to do that is because I serve on behalf of the county as one of the staff appointments to the Convention and Visitors Bureau, and that is the main way that Alamo County works in the tourism sector through our participation on the CACBB. So Goal Seven is to partner to expand efforts to build the county's tourism sector. And this is just a little bit of data. This comes from the Virginia Tourism Corporation. They keep this statewide as well as by locality. The most recent data available is year 2022, so that's the most current that they have. You'll note a couple of things. One is that obviously the pandemic happened. And you can see that 2020 bar dropped very low. You'll recall that at that time, travel really slammed to a halt in, really, across the world. 2021, there was a bit of a recovery greater than certainly folks had projected. And a lot of that became due to changing travel preferences during that period where things didn't feel quite open, but things were no longer feeling unsafe to travel. And so we fill a niche of a really great place to spend a couple of nights, located within, you know, a short drive of a lot of major metropolitan areas. And so there was an increase in tourism, a really strong recovery from the 2020 low. And you can see really great news, 2022, we actually exceeded our pre-pandemic tourism numbers, which was really exciting to see as staffing has stabilized at a lot of the sector, the service providers in the sector. And it's been a great time to visit Alamo County and Charlottesville. Visitor spending is a little over half a billion dollars. So it is one of the major sectors driving the Alamo economy. 9% of all county jobs are sustained by tourism, and that is direct service at lodging and tourist destinations, but also, you know, they attribute some of the indirect and induced effects of having visitors in the area eating lunch and doing some shopping while they're in town as well. Visitors generated almost $40 million in state and local taxes. Recent accolades were great. We are a great place to visit. Wine Enthusiast Magazine has Charlottesville, Virginia, in a broad sense of the word Charlottesville, as one of the top five wine regions for 2023. So we are a finalist, and we'll expect to hear back on that in just a couple of weeks. Really exciting recognition just to be on a list with La Brusco, Italy, Provence, France, Australia, South Africa are also on the top five list. So it's a huge recognition just to be on a list with some really strong wine-producing regions. We're also just named one of the top happiest towns from outside, which is a publication that's web and magazine, as well as seven best US cities and towns to see fall foliage. Again, a lot of those show up as Charlottesville, but what they're actually talking about is a lot of the amenities and opportunities that we have in Alamo, and we're very proud of that. So I mentioned the CACBB. That's the agency that promotes tourism for our region. It's a destination marketing and management organization. That's an industry term that describes the work that they do. It's funded through a portion of the lodging tax, and that's generated by overnight stays in the community. They focus on marketing our region. They provide visitor resources ahead of and during travel, and they also work hard to increase visibility of and support for underrepresented tourism segments. And so some of the work over the past several years on the left side of your screen, Tourism for All is an initiative to show our community as a place that's welcoming to all visitors. One of the sub-brands that CACBB works on as an initiative that has a lot of direct marketing and influencer-type engagement is Discover Black Seville to highlight the black business owners, black restaurateurs, and to really show that this community is a welcoming place for all kinds of visitors. Another example of that work is a partnership with Wheel of the World, which directly engages some of our tourism destinations in evaluating how accessible is their facility and their tours and other amenities for folks who navigate in a wheelchair. And so that's some really great focused work that CACBB has been leading, which has some really great impacts on the tourism sector overall. The CACBB Management Board has 15 members. As I said, I'm the staff person for Alamo County. There's one staff person, one elected official from Alamo Marl and Charlottesville, and 14 industry representatives. In the years since Project Enable was created, there's a new executive director at the CACBB. That board composition has shifted a bit, and they've launched the, what is the current brand logo? The Charlottesville-Alamo County, Virginia. And there's a really exciting project that's just launched to do the first long-term strategic tourism marketing plan, which will give really a roadmap to the organization on how to focus their efforts moving forward. These are the marketing pillars. It won't surprise you that farm-to-table food and beverage, that encompasses both our excellent restaurants, but also wineries, breweries, and cideries and distilleries as a real pull for folks to come visit us. There's culture and history, world-class amenities with small-town charm, outdoor recreation, and a vibrant art, live entertainment, and festival sector. Obviously, Monticello remains a big draw. The University of Virginia obviously brings a lot of folks to our community, and they are counted in those numbers as well. But we have a lot of really great things that pull people in to stay once they've decided to make that investment in those singular destinations. And that is all I have, and I'm going to pause for questions that I'm going to let Mr. Newberry facilitate.
Happy to take any questions. Sure. First and foremost, thank you all for the rich conversation and presentation. And I'll open up to the commission. Do my colleagues have any questions regarding the presentation? Very timely, too. Thank you. So I'll start to my right. Commissioner Moore, do you have any questions?
Thank you for the presentation. It was a nice overview of all the goals and some of the good examples of things that are going on. I was curious to hear more about sort of public-private partnerships and how that's been going over the last few years. Any examples or otherwise?
Yes. So thank you for the question. We have, I'm not sure how many we have exactly right now. We have a total of 19 different performance agreements we're administering right now. I would say probably seven or eight public-private partnerships. A number of, I would say we have a handful or so that are in development in terms of trying to figure out if there's the opportunity to, where it would make sense for us to partner with someone on a particular project. They are, you know, when I was, previous to joining the Economic Development Office, I was in the Community Development Department for a number of years. I thought that some of our projects took a long time, and I didn't know that you can spend years working on public-private partnerships in the economic development world. So Willow Tree being a good example, you know, that probably, those discussions started in 2017, completed in 2018, and, you know, we'll continue to administer that for another couple of years. So those are long-term projects. And it's still exciting. As, you know, the pandemic came online, we were, you know, making amendments as needed. And but it's an important tool in the toolbox that distinguishes us from other communities where people are considering investment. It, it's an important tool in the toolbox that distinguishes us from other communities where people are cons- considering investment.
And I said, uh, one other if you don't mind, which is uh, wondering about um, I hear about uh, uh, this is like shovel-ready sites. You know, the, the pads where business could come and locate in and, and off you go. What's the state of that kind of shovel-ready site or sites in Albemarle County, and, and what challenges uh, do we face on that front?
That's an excellent question. Uh, site readiness is one of the biggest challenges to business investment in our community. We have, the state has a five-tier system to categorize the readiness of a site. Five being uh, ready for uh, construction to begin, permits are already in hand. One being raw land that's outside of the growth area that's not even being contemplated for development. We, the, I, I would say a major goal of most communities is to have a diversity of product at a tier-four level. We currently have one site um, in the county that is tier-four. That's North Fork. They have two hundred and fifty-three acres that are characterized by the Virginia Economic Development Partnership is tier-four. It would, it would be, uh, you know, if I were uh, king for a day, we would, we would have uh, multiple tier-four sites. Within um, our various development areas um, at different sizes, at different price points. To accommodate the people that have been successful here and can grow. Um, and can contribute career ladder jobs to our community.
Excuse me. Anything else, Commissioner? Anything else? Commissioner Murray?
Yeah, I was glad to see outdoor recreation miss- mentioned as one of the marketing pillars for tourism. I'd like to see an objective related to preserving and promoting Albemarle's recreation economy. Which among other things includes running, cycling, hiking, kayaking, fishing, camping, botany, and birdwatching. As somebody who spends a lot of time outdoors myself, and who's spent thousands of my own dollars um, visiting other communities and locally. And, and being outdoors and doing things, running or, or botany. I think it's, it's not something that we're really doing enough to recognize the financial impact of that. If you just look at one thing like the Charlottesville Timmy Lyer, for example, all the people that traveled here to go to that race. Who go and stay in a hotel, eat a restaurant, um, maybe do some shopping. I, I think that there's a, a big impact of that when you consider all the, all the running races, all the cycling races. All the, um, all the people who come here to fish or birdwatch or do any of that. It's, it's a huge impact. I'd just like to see some recognition of it. I, I did like your example of Willow Tree, which I thought was a really good example of s- sustainable redevelopment. And I think anything you can do to, and beef up the objectives concerning um. Redevelopment and encouraging redevelopment is an important thing. You had several great examples in your presentation of, of, of redevelopment projects that you had supported, so I'd like to see more of that. And then a very small thing, under job education, um, to, I'd like to see um. You know, someone who's, who's worked sort of environmental circles, you know, now we have a lot of funding through, through the state for things like. Storm, you know, stormwater and native plants. Um, it'd be, be great to um, have some training for people. We have to search very different, you know, the Stormwater Conservation District has had to. Do a lot of searching for people who are qualified to know how to manage stormwater or to install a rain garden or buy a filter, and these are great jobs for people. Love to see some partnerships maybe with Western Albemarle or with PVCC or.
Thank you. That's great feedback. Thank you.
Uh, actually, I'll go online. Don't want to forget my colleague here. Uh, Commissioner Firehawk.
Yeah, thank you so much. Um, I wanted to do a, a plus one to Commissioner Murray about. Really promoting the natural beauty of this area. For example, uh, birders as tourists spend more than most all other types of tourists. I don't know if it's all the binoculars they need or all the yummy food they want to eat after they bird, but. Those are very lucrative uh, types of tourists to attract. But I really wanted to see if there's, and I don't expect an answer now, but if there could be more emphasis placed on. Helping to attract and grow small businesses. You know, we talk about the University of Virginia and the incubation uh, opportunities there. Uh, I was a professor at UVA, and then I started a small business that uh, had one employee, which was me, and now has eighteen employees. Small businesses make up ninety-nine point five percent of all businesses, and there's more than seven hundred and sixty-six thousand small businesses in Virginia. Most of the new companies that are startups are started as small businesses, and I think that, in my opinion. We don't do quite enough. It's always um, I guess more. I don't want to word, use the word sexy, but it's more um, attractive to talk about. You know, saving a company that maybe had fifty jobs or a hundred jobs, but. These entrepreneurial startups really are uh, very popular in our area, and I would like to see an emphasis on. More of the startup services as part of our economic development strategies, because those startups. Uh, once they get up, can end up being in a significant part of our economy. So I just giving a plug for not only focusing on the larger, larger companies and not just on the, the breweries and cideries, but also. Uh, on all different kinds of other uh, tech firms and other sort of uh, intellectual-based small businesses, not just the sort of mom-and-pop shops, but. Uh, I think I've, I think I've made my point, so I'll stop. It's kind of funny talking into the void, but thank you for listening.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Firehawk. I'll, I'll go now to Commissioner Missile.
Great, thank you. Uh, thanks for your presentations. Really impressive, and I've got to say, you guys have made light-year. Movement over the last several years, so congratulations. Also, I do have to say separately, it's been great to partner with you all and really look forward to doing that. I'm sorry, I took my hat off for a second. Switching hats. Couple of quick questions. One is, how can we be most helpful? So you mentioned um, elements that can be included in a performance agreement, part of a comp plan, be part of the comp plan. I, you don't have to answer it now, but if there's. A way that you can think through, how as a planning commission, can we be most helpful for the county in terms of economic development? Either currently or, you know, into the future, thinking forward.
Yeah, uh, thank you for that question. I, I thought about that um, as I was thinking about the presentation this afternoon. The, the broadest stroke that, to answer that question, I think is just eh, keeping us a, as a part of the conversation. And I realize that's a two-way street, a- and that um, you know, I acknowledge personally, I could do a better job of communicating. You know, our, some of our initiatives and, and things that we have going on, but I think simply being a part of the conversation. Is, is a. As the Planning Commission deliberates and considers all the different factors in the comp plan and makes their commentary, appreciate the. Thinking about the lens of economic development too.
Got it, thanks. Um, couple of questions about your. Fancy document that came with a free gift. I am looking on. See. Gosh, what page was it? It's where you listed the businesses, the business areas of business focus. Why can't I not find it now?
Yeah, it's gonna be towards the, the beginning, page, page six.
Yep. So it talks about recommended target industries, and maybe this is getting a little bit to what my colleagues had mentioned. Have you thought, you mentioned agribusiness, but thinking about the volume of rural area that we have in the county. Have there been initiatives to partner with agriculture that maybe aren't really what we typically think of as in terms of light industry? Any, any specifics there, or any thoughts like sort of moving beyond the central development core?
At the state level, there's a lot of interest in controlled environmental agriculture.
Okay.
Where there are um, you know, vertical growhouses and aquaculture and all sorts of things. That is currently a priority of, of the, the governor's administration.
Got it.
There are, when you, you look at the utilities that are required for some of those types of uh, uses. Our, our current policies do present some challenges to that. Through, throughout um, any, any business or company that's looking at Albemarle County, we first start with the comp plan and. Yeah, you know, uh, we would, I think we could do uh, with this update, we could provide some more thought and uh. Support for how do we provide viable uses of rural area property and.
Yeah.
And, and ensuring that it will um, uh, be able to be maintained and in a way that's consistent with the rural area goal.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
Um, just a couple more quick questions, sorry. Um. The CACBB, those were really amazing stats, especially the one that showed the growth of like the decrease during COVID and then the increase. And then the increase, and how we're from, what was it, four hundred million up to five hundred-plus million now? I'm curious, do you have any data that shows that continuing, or do you think there's sort of a bit of a spike, and then we'll be leveling off?
It, it's a great question. I think Emily Kilroy, I don't know, what are your rules? I'm used to presenting a. The um, it's, it's, it's a little bit sight to be, sight to be seen. The uh, so, and some of the things that, that drive that, um, that make that hard to, to land are. Coming out of the pandemic, there was an industry term that I have come to very much appreciate, which is called revenge travel. Um, and that is um, everyone who did not, um, who had to put off a big trip. And then suddenly everyone in America found themselves in Rome last summer. Because they had all planned in twenty twenty or twenty twenty-one or twenty twenty-two to mark a big anniversary or life event to, to take those trips. Um, and so, um, so at some point, those, the revenge travel will, will end, um, and so what does that look like long-term? Again, we had a buoying effect as being a, a good destination from Washington DC and the Research Triangle Park area in North Carolina. And so, so, so it's, it's, it's something that they're watching very closely. Um, monthly, the CACBB gets um, reports on hotel occupancy data. Um, and we continue month, you know, when you look at the months across several years, um, we continue to see some pretty strong um, occupancy data. In light, uh, and even despite um, fairly high, when you look at historical trends, um, average um, rates for rooms. Um, and so it does seem like, even with really high room rates, folks are still really wanting to come here. The university is obviously a huge impact of that. The um, I think you have a copy of the uh, Economic Impact Report for the um, Defense Sector showed that there's a lot of visit, visitation, overnight visitations that are driven by. Ravanna Station, um, and they obviously continue to, to increase their presence um, in the community. And so, um, so it's hard to, it's hard to know, um, but it's something that the CACBB is looking at really closely and continuing to really focus on um, building. The, um, what are the destinations here? And so um, to Ms. Firehawk's point, um, we're a competitive wine region. Partially because the wine that we grow here, or the grapes that we grow here, you know, grow wine. Are, um, are producing really great wines, and our vintners are producing really great wines from them. But it's, it feels different than um, standing in a city, drinking wine in a wine shop. Um, and so part of it really is um, the, the, the sense of place that you get and, and the visuals that you get from, from drinking at a winery in Albemarle. So uh, we'll be looking at that really closely, and we're obviously very excited to see um, that this, that, that the sector has, has really bounced back from the pandemic. Really strong.
Great, thank you. Um, last question, promise. Zoning modernization. So as we think through that, um, it would be helpful, and, and maybe this is less of a question, you're probably already doing this, but as you think about the zoning designations. Thinking about how inter- intertwined, or how it's beneficial to intertwine um, uses. Into zoning designations that are beneficial for all of the things we think about, like sustainability, et cetera, but also. Economic development, mixed use, um, twenty-four-seven, live, work, play, all of those kinds of characteristics and how, how that can be incorporated. Again, part of how we can help. Thanks.
Commissioner Carazano? Thank you. Yeah, this was, this was really helpful and very enlightening in many ways, and there's some things that I wasn't aware of, even the amount of partnering that you were doing. With adaptive reuse, um, particulars, which is, it's my, that's my second question, but my first question is. So can you talk a little bit about the affordability of commercial property? Uh, and, and the viability of commercial po- property currently here in Albemarle County? We've had, just to give you a little bit of context on my question, we've had during the last year. A number of resubmissions to reduce the amount of commercial property in, in, in the developments. And it's because of affordability, because of demand. Uh, so can you talk a little bit about that? What are some mitigating factors that um, you feel are, are out there that we can? Begin to look, look at, and, and back to uh, Commissioner Missile's question, what are some things that? We can perhaps help? But that's, it's a challenge that we're seeing, where it's a reduction of commercial property. Perhaps eh, new development of commercial property. Perhaps there's certainly um, some vacancies out there and kind of the how the work. Environment is, is changing, and so, yeah, I would love to get your thoughts on, on some of that.
Yeah, I, I wish I had a great answer for you. Um, you know, I, by no means am I an expert on the commercial real estate. Sector, uh, but I, I can share that, you know, from what I've heard from commercial property owners is that, you know, they're seeing. Lower demand um, than they have seen previously. The macroeconomic shifts of shoppers for things like retail and things like that, uh, moving to online, away from brick and mortar. The challenges with rising costs and inflation to do any sort of, you know, if you're gonna. Change a commercial space from one use to another, is a small business owner gonna be able to put? A couple hundred thousand dollars into renovating a space so that it can be um. It can accommodate that use. So it feels like, and you know, I'm really shooting from the hip here, uh, that there are just more and more challenges to. Commercial property, whereas the demand for residential is so strong and the um, the. The fact that not everybody has to own a business, but everybody needs a place to live, you know, the demand is, is just so much more um. Certain, and for banks that are financing these things, uh, they, they feel a lot more comfortable with residential projects than commercial ones. So I, I think there's a lot of complicating factors, but I could, I could probably just leave it there. Um, I don't think that answers all of your questions, but um. You know, communicating for anybody that might be listening or might watch this later, uh, our office really appreciates. Engaging with the private sector around what their challenges are, what they're seeing, so that we can be in a position to respond in a way that meets the community's needs.
So yeah, my, the second part of my question is, is with adaptive reuse, and I completely agree with your assessment. I, I think there's, these challenges will probably continue. For a few years, and, and the amount of commercial, new commercial property that we'll be bringing online, uh, probably reduced. And so the question, question and comment is, does that now provide an opportunity for adaptive reuse? So what do we do with the current inventory that we have? Uh, which was built at a, at a lower price point, so perhaps there's opportunities there to, to, to bring in businesses uh, in an affordable rate. Do we incentivize adaptive reuse? Are we partnering? And of course, you gave some examples, the, the Will Tree being one of them, but how are we partnering with, with companies um? To incentivize adaptive reuse? And, and do we now have a greater opportunity because of the climate that we just talked about?
I, I think we do have a greater opportunity um, today and moving forward than we have previously. And one of the tools in the toolbox that has not been used by our community yet is something called a Building Reuse Grant. And it's.
Repeat that again.
It's a Building Reuse Grant.
Grant.
And it's specifically geared towards a target industry company that's expanding here. The, the, the exact example I gave where, you know, maybe there's a. Uh, some sort of capital investment that is gonna make it cost prohibitive for them to be here. Just to give some, some really quick, uh, you know, regionally, we talk with businesses that, particularly in industrial areas. That would say, you know, I could locate my business in uh, to the east or to the west, you know, Louisa, Fluvana, or Waynesboro. You know, not for. Half-price, but even less than half-price of what it would be to locate here. And so um, it, it becomes increasingly difficult for business owners to choose to invest here when there's that dynamic at play. I think even with our grant, we're still asking businesses to do more than they can, they may be able to do. So. We have other state grants that. we have other state grants that support those kinds of costs. There's also um an adoption of the Virginia Building Code that makes it a little bit easier to go into existing buildings. Um, the new construction, so we have some, I think, tailwinds that will help. I think creating the opportunity for the private sector to test that out would be a great opportunity for us to to think more about, uh, think more deeply about and consider.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Commissioner Bivens?
Thank you, Chair. Good to see you, Jason. Good to see you. So so part of what we're talking about when we talk about economic development is about how good are we about future casting? That's all what this is about here. How at this point in time in twenty twenty three, can I look somewhere down the line and say these are the kinds of businesses and these are the kinds of individuals we would like to have in our community? And so part of what I'm asking, and so I I see the the recommended target industries and I think there's an acknowledgement, at least there's an acceptance and acknowledgement with me. But these are are sort of rarefied business functions that could actually be anywhere in the world. Okay, if I'm in a bioscience or a medical device, I don't have to be here. We have a good medical device uh business that took over the former post office distribution center up uh on Airport Road, but they don't have to be there. And if I look instead of business and financial services, I would be, if I were on the the board, I would be cautious about that industry because that industry is in such dynamic flux right now that it's not sure what it's going to look like even in just two years. And depending on the administrations in Washington, there's no telling what might happen in the financial services area. So the information technology and defense and security, we all know the Ravanna Station, I think it's called Ravanna Station. The Ravanna Station project is in fact something because of the landmass and the proximity to Washington. And depending on where they re where they put those those buildings that are going to leave Washington actually could be an anchor for this community. So thinking so, so the whole idea is about what do we anchor in this community that allows us to stake a claim on being a special place, okay? If I were um an autocrat for a few moments, I would like, call us Albemarle. I would figure out a way for us to stop being Charlottesville. Let that hang out there for a second. Because I think it dilutes our brand. Let me give you an example of that. Some of you know that I've lived a lot of places in the world. Anything that goes on, friends of mine say, is it safe to be in Charlottesville? In twenty seventeen, I had friends from around the world WhatsApping me and DMing me and asking me, are you safe? Are you and my spouse safe here? Everything, whether or not it's the Guardian or it's Le Monde or it's, uh, we don't need to go any farther than that. When they say about what's happening in America, they always give an example of Charlottesville. Of which, while that's really nice, it is not helpful. It is not helpful when people look to bring businesses to town. And when they say Charlottesville, they see crime, they see dysfunctional dysfunctional um governing in a in our sister city. They see they see things which which they're not used to as someone who grew up in northeast distinguishing between a county and a city. They do not understand the separate jurisdictions there. Most business, most business owners, if they unless they came from uh Massachusetts or Kentucky or someplace like that, don't understand the separateness between jurisdictions of counties and cities. And so how we do that, I think, is to brand ourselves in some way, and I know I'm speaking into the wind here, but that's what I'm doing. As um as a brand ourselves as Albemarle County, this is Albemarle County. This is not the city of Charlottesville. That's one of the things that I think there's a there's a deficit there. I think I would like to hear as as when you come back to us, I think you're coming back to us for really sort of a a a work session on on the comp plan at some point, to sort of say, here are the things which we hear from our business partners that keeps them from coming, from making a different decision. Okay? You talk of JT, you talk about what it takes to get things through economic development. I'm still waiting on some projects to be built from twelve years ago. And people can say, you know, it's because of the 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 it's the economy of the project. Okay, that might be true, but I think sometimes it's because the ROI on the project doesn't have a natural light to how I can sustain this in the future. So making the drawing the nexus between this investment allows you to both have this type of ROI and allows us to have an investment, which I think is a piece of here I'm coming to on this one. Is that in your in your group of people that you interact with here, I would love to see some conversation about what you're doing with Albemarle School System. The reason I say that's because we've we've got one center, we've got a center one that's over there and what used to be in my mind, the Comdal Building. Some special name now, but in my mind, it will always be the Comdal Building. And then we have a center two, which I think we just talked about. I'm looking to my left here, which will probably be on the Lamb's Lane campus. I don't think I'm giving anything away on that. I'm hoping it's going to be on the Lamb's Lane campus. My piece there is that that's a distinct sort of two distinct places that are trying to give young people an an avenue to a life after high school so they can stay here. Because one of the things I'd actually like to see as you're talking about economic development, what do we lose every year? What do we lose when people graduate from the various places they can graduate, not necessarily university, because universities become much more of a a uh a uh a national place than it used to be, just feeding the minds that are that are from the or from this region. But to just know how many of our people leave, because then in fact, we're talking about the new economic development is for people that we're attracting here. Karen said, we're not trying to build people, we're not trying to build a solution that helps us to sustain and to develop an e- an an ecosystem that allows us to sort of create forward thinking and future casting in 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 the uh for economic development here. I would also, I think, would be helpful to know what drives tourism here? What does drive tourism here? This is where everybody knows my little piece here is that while I believe that some people go up to Mickey Tavern and have some fried chicken on their way from going to Monticello. I don't believe that Monticello's numbers drive the way they do now. And the reason I don't believe that, because I read their documents. Their documents say their numbers are down. Because they're asking for too much money. When I ask for too much money for gifts, that tells me something's wrong from another part of my life. So I want to know what are the elements that are driving the tourist economy here? We all knew at one point we were the either the number one or number two bridal destination in America. And from what I understand from some people who still get married, that that's a hundred thousand, fifty thousand, that could be a hundred thousand or fifty thousand dollar weekend.
Hmm.
I'd say, don't put it in Bitcoin. I don't know if you want to put it in that. Um, and so what's driving, what's driving the economy when we look at tourism? Because then you talk, then you start thinking about what are the auxiliary sort of businesses we want to try and attract here to sustain that? Whether or not it's birding, whether or not it's outdoor uh bicycle, bicycle, off-road, not whatever that cross bicycle stuff is, um, whether it's that kind of stuff. And how do we advertise that in a way that lets people know on a national level that this is a place that you, because we have, this is a place you can do that? Because we have a brilliant airport. I can be anywhere in the world in one stop out of that airport. And so that means that, no, it's not Dulles, but who wants to go to Dulles? Who wants, who, and it's no, it's not Richmond, but it is Charlottesville. It's easy to get to, it's easy to use and when yeah, I know, I'd like to call it Albemarle Airport, but I know I'll get in trouble for that. Um, that's what I like to call it. It's like Albemarle Charlottesville Airport. Um, and it when we start later on this afternoon, when we start talk about what might be happening at Northport, we're starting to create this sort of this sort of mass there that says, come to Albemarle County. So I'm just thinking about what are the things that come to Albemarle County? I will say to the C A C B, Emily, when I, there's a bunch of things that I get a hold of, something called Thrill List, Axios DC, Axios Richmond, when they talk about wine, they never talk about here. They always talk about Northern Virginia. Oh, you can go to Loudoun County or you can go to Della Plain or you can go to the to Focia County for wine. They never talk about here. It's like, come here. So when you're talking to seats, this the C A C B, tell them they need to get in those people's ears and tell them they need to come here. Because we're actually a better place, I won't say we're a better place than Middleburg, but yeah, I'll let somebody else say that. But we have more to do if you come here than just to go to Middleburg or to go to Della Plain or go to the in it, the in 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 Paris, um, the the in in Paris, Virginia. So this whole idea about are we looking at our high schools? And are we talking to them and talking to our to the to possible businesses about how those young people can get jobs that aren't PhDs and that are not sort of very specialized sort of technique? And that we can groom them in the way that things used to happen in the business where you'd bring somebody in, they'd work for a while and they may stay with you for ten years. Because that's the kind of, that's the kind of business depth and sort of depth of depth of business that we're doing here. The whole idea that if we could somehow another stop being Charlottesville, but be Albemarle and lift up the whole idea that this is Albemarle County and this is why this is the place you want to come to. And then thinking about what are the things, if if tourism is where we're going? And people heard me talk about tourism, what are the natural bits of tourism that we can that we can speak to? Even if you just look at our the the sister state next to us, which is West Virginia, what they are doing is with the vis a vis selling their tourism with pictures and magazines and things like and stories and things like that. It's not what we're doing and maybe we could learn something from that, choosing that. But then then finally, finally, I don't know what it would be like for the county or for you, because you can do it, the county can't do it, to take equity positions in place in in firms that you think have a tremendous upside. The reason I like that is because the my fear with Willow Tree is that Willow Tree could actually pick up and go if the Canadians decided that they didn't want to be here anymore. It was a little difficult to do that if you own some, either own some of the the debt. Or you actually have, you have some people on their small boards advising them. So then in fact, those decisions have to go through another level of put a little drag on those decisions as opposed to those decisions being external to this community. So how do we, how do we sort of help them do what they do? But how do we also not let those decisions be outside of our influence? Because sometimes when it's outside of our influence, you don't have a way of keeping or or keeping something from happening as well. And, you know, business organizations tend to look for the least place they can go with the least resistance. That's just, you know, it's like water. And then the last thing, on the last slide that that was on there for that, where was that auditorium? The auditorium that was on the last slide, is that the one that stands, is that the, there was this fabulous auditorium. Is that the, what's that, the building downtown across from the Amalie?
Code?
The code building, was that the code building?
I didn't. You can bring it back. It's
And it better be Charlottesville, Albemarle, but but I don't have that. What it, where's that?
That's the code building.
Is that the code building? Okay. If it's not the code building, don't put any slides on any, on each, that's not us. Don't do that. Don't do that. Don't do that. Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you. And uh, well, I was gonna ask a couple of questions. You you want to go?
Go ahead. Sure. Quick, quick helping. Uh, and I just wanted to um, um, uh, so plus one, Commissioner Firehawk, talking about sort of small business and entrepreneurship and 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 services and resources for that kind of development. It's implied in a lot of these, but uh uh more explicit, but then also speaking to something Commissioner Bivens said. Um, that sense that when you have a private owner that can sell it off and just pick up and move anytime, you know, I grew up in West Virginia where that happened. You know, like, like, we're all excited about the uh, you know, auto parts manufacturer and they got great tax credit for twenty years and then they left. Um, and that was that. Um, one of the things I might add on to what Commissioner Firehawk was saying was, and I also like this uh politically too, uh, would be to um consider being sort of a pioneer in 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 um uh, services and resources to cooperative uh businesses. Uh, that are that are worker owned, that are that are, you know, benefit the members of those of those enterprises. Uh, kind of extending our political democracy into kind of an economic democracy. Um, and it's that kind of, you know, we're in that kind of community where that solidarity economy, I think, would fly well. Uh, and I see a lot of things out there about entrepreneurship and and very little about um kind of support to cooperative enterprises where people are very smart, want to you know, do good business work, um, and often can't find financing because it's just not normal. Um, and so that's just something for uh aspirational whenever we talk about economic stuff. And also they're going to be less likely to pick up and go if they're a co-op. Yeah, thanks.
Well, I did have a couple of questions. Commissioner Firehawk, I definitely will come back to you. Um, I had a couple of questions that I would like you to maybe expand on just a little bit. And one is going back to Commissioner Bivens. I flagged it and it was around the biggest pain points, right? It's like in those unsuccessful pursuits. And I'm trying to glean information that might inform our planning. So what are some of those things that kind of rise to the top? Is it workforce development? Is it utilities and site readiness, affordable housing? Like, where are those things that are those pain points that you're seeing?
Yeah, I'll try to be brief, um, just recognizing the the Ravanna Futures content is still ahead of us. The biggest pain point is talent and the barriers to talent being here. So um more than ever before, economic development's talking about housing, we're talking about childcare, we're talking about access to to health care. Um, I would say, you know, services that um have not been discussed in any meaningful way from an economic development perspective. You see even some local governments investing in this kind of infrastructure now as a way to ensure their um their residents can can work there um as well as live there.
Sure, sure. That that's helpful and kind of a segue to regional partnerships. And as you are partnering with our surrounding counties and city of Charlottesville, there'll be a point in time where we're looking at our borders, right? And we're going to be thinking about that for the comprehensive plan. There'll be a time where we're meeting with Charlottesville City Planning Commission. Any insights that you want to kind of provide to us to kind of inform that thinking as we're looking at the borders? Right? As you're thinking about regional partnerships and trying to, you know, bigger is sometimes better, right? When you have more people at the table, all the counties and trying to lure someone, if you could maybe provide some insights to that.
I I would say our region is exceptional and that they truly do work together to retain businesses. So we benefit tremendously from having a strong relationship with the city as people are thinking about leaving our community. I think we get a very early knock on the door, Willow Tree being one example of that. A a different example would be MITRE located in Norfolk, uh, needed additional space to fly drones. They couldn't fly near the airport near Norfolk, and so they uh obtained space in Orange County. Uh, so we we work throughout the region to to keep that economic impact here, because we know the dollars um from city businesses are going to be spent in the county and and vice versa, a- as well as throughout the region. So um, I I think, you know, maintaining strong relationships and partnerships would be the best way for us to continue keeping investment in the region.
Sure. And if there's anything from a planning perspective, as we're looking at the borders and land use, that would be helpful as you for the country. And and last question, I do want to move us along. I know there's a second part to the presentation. Um, within the comprehensive plan, I imagine there's sometimes tug and pull with like your goals. Curious if you could talk a little bit about that as we're undertaking this exercise, so.
Yeah, uh, there there is a a natural um uh pull, push and pull. And I think that we look for opportunities where we can enhance. So um, you know, in the development, can we have natural uh native plants? Can we have, you know, greater uh natural areas, native plants, biofilters, where there may have been something less um effective in its place that could still meet requirements, but um you know, so I think we're we're looking for win-wins all the time. Um, but that that natural uh conflict exists and and I, you know, I think we e- accept that, that that's going to exist.
Uh, I'm gonna go to Commissioner Firehawk that I really do want to move us along. Commissioner Firehawk?
Okay, I'd like to ask a question and then I have three real quick comments. My question was about, you were talking earlier about providing help to businesses when they had to maybe like retrofit a space to be available. And it's true that a lot of like the office space we have is older stock. And and I've I've so far done two businesses in Admiral County where I had to rewire the whole place because it need, you know, it it didn't have fiber, like what it in the corner. Um, and and that was really expensive. That was thousands of dollars in both examples, like, you know, well over ten thousand dollars. And I guess, is that the kind of thing that that is also available through small business lounge and things, you know? I mean, because to me, that's retrofitting a space so that a modern company can work in it. Is that something that you also support?
The best place to get information on on the, you know, SBA loans through our Small Business Development Center. They're the best resource for access to capital for small businesses.
Okay, and then I have my three quick comments. Um, affordable, you talked about some of the limitations. Affordable, you talked about some of the limitations as being, um, talent. But I also wanna throw out that affordable housing is a real issue. I, I just created two new positions in the last month. And, uh, bo- allowed both employees to locate closer to Richmond because they couldn't afford, even though I was paying them a good wage. Uh, the, the rental costs are so exorbitant for someone to get a one bedroom apartment here. So thinking about ways that we can somehow link, you know, providing housing affordability. As, as part of our, you know, essential for attracting business here. The, the other comment is, I wanted to go back to something commissioner Bivin said that I thought was really insightful, which is just that point that. There's, there are companies here like mine and others that don't have to be here, there's no physical reason to be in this, this county. Uh, but why are we here? It's because it's so beautiful, the, the natural environment, the ability to recreate outdoors. And there is a lot of data out there showing that businesses, uh, place a strong importance on the green of the local environment. And I don't think that we're promoting that enough, kind of like blindness because we are all here and we take it for granted. But for others, it's amazing, um, to be able to just go out the door and go kayaking or hiking or whatever. And then the last comment real quick is in other communities, uh, they have things called small business incubators. And I know you know what those are, but for small businesses starting up. Um, other, other cities and communities have, you know, like a building where it has like a shared receptionist. And, you know, there's an accountant, maybe services available, but nobody needs an accountant five days a week, they just need them one day a week. So they sit, and they have a conference room, but they don't need it to sit empty five, you know, five hours a day when they're not using it kind of thing. But those kind of things would make our area really attractive to startups. Um, and I think that, you know, like I said, I go to other cities and they have them and we don't have them here. I know we're not a city, but, um, we've got a lot of things that cities don't have. Commissioner Bivins was contrasting this to Charlottesville, but like, you know, some of the things we do have are beaut- like I said, great outdoors, great schools. Uh, I, I think that we could tout this location to some of those companies that, you know, can go anywhere. Uh, anywhere as long as they're near an airport and just last real quick. At that point about the Charlottesville airport is well taken because yes, I always have to get a connection out of it, I fly every week. But I can go anywhere from there without spending an hour and a half at the airport in the first place, so thanks.
All right, well, thank you, and with that, uh, Mr. Newberry or whoever is up next is Mr.
I think we have officially moved into the evening hour, so good evening. Chairperson Claiborne, members of the commission, Trevor Henry, deputy county executive, uh, appreciate being here today and having a chance to. Talk a little bit about Rivanah Futures or, or the, the Rivanah Project. When, uh, when JT was first asked to, to come and, and do kind of an update on project enable. We thought it might be a good opportunity to get in front of the planning commission to talk a little bit about the work that has been going on, um. In, in earnest over the past couple of years, but a lot of work by staff over the past five or six months related to. Um, an acquisition that the county is in, in the process of making. Um, my background, um, is that I've been with the county since two thousand nine, last time I was in front of the planning commission was. I, I can't remember what it was, but it was when I was involved with, uh, um, capital projects, I did a lot of capital project management. So that was my, kind of my, my entree into the county, former Navy, um, and when I moved into the executive office. I, um, I became involved with our Defense Affairs Committee, to a committee of the chamber, I'm very active in our defense and, and DOD community. Partnership with the state and that has led to, to some of the work by the county, um, that, that I'll talk about. I have eight slides of content, I'll move through them pretty quickly, but really just hoping to. To talk a little bit about the what and the why and then, uh, uh, ask for any questions, um, that I can answer. JT walked through the goals of, of project enable, the workaround Rivanah Station falls squarely under. Under our board strategic plan goal two, uh, and then project enables, uh, goal one and goal three. Specific to retention and expansion and then a specific call out to our defense industry and supporting that, um, in, in our region. Gonna, I'm gonna provide a little bit of background and context, um, a lot of folks, when I first moved to the county, I had heard of. NGIC, um, and a lot of people referred to Rivanah Station as NGIC. Right, and it just, it's interesting, it's, it's, um. You know, from the map, you can, you can see, um, Rivanah Station is right off of, of Route twenty nine, it's in the northern part of the county, it's, it's kind of hidden away. Uh, it is technically a sub installation of Fort Belvoir, Fort Belvoir is up. Near, um, you know, kind of the Alexandria area, I happened to be there yesterday, meeting with the, the command staff up there. Uh, Mr. Richardson, the county executive and I, Rivanah Station is what's called a sub installation. And they're very specific about that, it is not a base, it doesn't have all the amenities. Fort Belvoir, it's amazing, it's a, it's a, it's its own city, it has ten thousand. People that live on it have base housing, they have their own public works or unsecurity, they're in emergency management, massive. Rivanah Station does not have that, it's, it's a seventy five, currently a seventy five acre facility. It is secured, uh, perimeter fence line, they have secured access, but. There, there are tenants that are there that do the work in the intelligence community, but they don't have all the amenities. That a normal base, uh, or, or, uh, installation would have. So, um, the, 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 the first part of, of Rivanah Station was built and started in nineteen ninety seven. The Department of Defense purchased, uh, about twenty five acres and that's where they built the National Ground Intelligence Center, that was the first component that was there. With, um. When nine eleven happened, along with some BRAC activities, there were other entities that, um, that, that were built out. Which includes the Defense Intelligence Agency and the National Geospatial Intelligence Agency, NGA and DIA. Altogether, um, the government has invested about three hundred and twelve million dollars to Rivanah Station. Drive up there now and, and you look to the, to the east as you, as you're driving up past Borders Road, you see a big crane. There's about a ninety million dollar, um, addition project happening on, on the station. I will slip up and I'll call it a base, it's not a base, so I just, uh, I don't, I don't mean to, to, uh, infer that. But the, 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 the great thing about the location is it is. Um, it is outside of the, of the churn of DC, but it's outside also what's called the blast zone, this, this provides a critical. Um, national security function and I, I think in the origins of this site and this location. It has some ties to certainly to our community, to, um, to UVA. And some of the, uh, elements that, that have been in this, in this ecosystem, but it also is, is a tactical, um, location. Uh, it's, it's drivable, but it is, it is outside of, of kind of that, um. That concern and, uh, i- if something untoward were to happen. And then finally, our veterans of, uh, uh, veterans of active duty, uh, sorry, veteran and Defense Affairs Office out of the state. Secretary Crenshaw, his office has often repeated that Rivanah Station is the only facility in the state that has land that is available around it that is not built out. So it's not, uh, doesn't have an encroached, um, um, footprint. Rivanah Station today, um, I mentioned the three entities, uh, they support all the intelligence, um. Uh, community work, um, they, um. They provide battlefield intelligence, they, they were very active over the, the twenty year, uh, war with, with Afghanistan. They are active right now with what's happening in the Middle East, it's, it's, um, it's a very critical aspect to, um, our day to day defense and national security. Uh, there are. Uh, we have the, the most recent data say there were twenty two hundred, there's twenty two hundred plus civilian and military people that work on the seventy five acres. Um, our latest, uh, meeting with NGIC said that number is closer to three thousand, which reflects a growth in, in mission and work. And so it is, um, it is an anchor, uh, function to our, uh, to our community. We did, uh, through the chamber, funded a study via Warden Cooper Center on, uh, economic analysis of defense in our region. Uh, for Almore County, Charlottesville and Green, approximately one point two billion annually tied to defense. That is a number two economic engine behind UVA, UVA is significantly above that, but, but still, that number exceeds. By, um. By about a hundred percent what we thought it was, um, and that was data that we had from the state, that's why we wanted to, to do a little more of a deep dive. The, you know, nearly three thousand employees all make on an average of about a hundred thousand dollars annually, so this, this is a good paying job. And Rivanah Station generates about fifty two percent of the one point two billion, so is a, is a key, uh, engine. I should note too, we talked about visitors and tourism, prior to the pandemic, um. Rivanah Station would report about twelve thousand, I'm gonna air quote visitors a year. Now, I think these visitors probably took, you know, they stayed in our hotels, they took advantage of our restaurants. They probably hit some of the, the vineyards and breweries, but they were here for, for classified visits to the, uh, you know, to the station. Um, so, so certainly there's an economic element to that. I mentioned, uh, the secretary of veteran and defense affairs, over the past, uh, fifteen years or so, about every four or five years. They've done a listening, um, session across the state at all of bases and installations. Where they meet with representatives, they call it a non-attributional meeting with representatives from the facility, along with area stakeholders. Um, we most recently had, had a, uh, an update of this work in, uh, at the end of May. The image, uh, in front of you, you know, so it's, it's a SWAT analysis, there's been consist- some consistency in, in what we've heard from. From Rivanah Station over the past, um. You know, decade plus, but the image on the right is what, what, um, came out of, of an effort a few years ago. I think it was on twenty seventeen timeframe to look at potential mission growth and an expansion of the facility. Uh, it's often referred to as art of the possibility, it's, um. You know, it's not a design, it's really more just, um, uh, kind of a, a master plan of, of how it might work. Um, if, if we were to do an expansion and there were additional missions or other and, uh, other functions that, that, uh, could support the, the mission. Um, separately, Rivanah Station through, um, the Army Corps of Engineering has done its own master plan. That's a requirement, uh, of all bases and installations, there, there wasn't, um, stakeholder involvement outside, that really was a inside defense line focus. There were, there were some, um, expansion ideas that, that were, that, that were created in that. Um, and ultimately that led to the, the expansion that's happening there, uh, today. And I'll note that, that to, to expand on site, uh, it was expensive, about ninety million dollars, uh, based on, on some of the terrain. They had to bring in some parking, structured parking, the, the site is built out, the seventy five acres are, are really built out, um, currently. And so Rivanah Station tomorrow, that's, that's really what has prompted action, uh, by the county. You know, this, this slide really represents business, uh, and, uh, retention work, business retention and expansion work, you know, that's underway. Um, the county has been in discussion with our, uh, state, um. Friends at the state in, in the veteran and affairs office, really since twenty eighteen. Looking to help solve some of the concerns, uh, that have come out of Rivanah Station related to their current expansion and in, and in the future. And it's, it's worth noting that the, the DOD has a strong preference. Generally to have a, a large buffer from its neighbors. Uh, as practical as possible to enh- enhance base security and also mitigate intelligence collection. That is, that is as important here as anywhere, um, concerns over encroachment. And, and purchase of the land, um, is a, uh, is a, is a problem that, that is emerging across the nation. Uh, I think, um, you know, turn on any news broadcast on the weekend, normally someone is talking about. Encroachment around bases in, in California and Texas, the concern is, um. Foreign nationals buying property in a way to then affect what is, what is happening on that base. And so thi- this is being wrestled with at the federal and DOD level, this, this concern has also been communicated at Rivanah Station. So, so that work is what prompted a, a strategy a, a few years ago, and again, working with our state, um, our, our, our state contacts. To, to look at the, uh, at the land around Rivanah Station to see what could the county do? To, um, to help mitigate any of those concerns, but also give us a potential to, to build out and enhance, um. The, the exist- is existing function and serve as an economic development project. I should note, one of the things that we've heard consistently from, um, the DOD, right now Borders Road, um. Terminates, uh, really right, there's a, there's a commercial building. I'm gonna try to just talk through, I'm not gonna try to do a mouse on this thing, but the, the existing kind of red. Outline is the existing seventy five acres, just outside of that is a commercial building, which, which is a privately owned. Um, building owned, um, by LLC out of Chicago and houses, um. Um, support staff, uh, contractors, consultants that support, um, support Rivanah Station. The army is very interested in, in the extension of Borders Road back to twenty nine. Um, and you can kind of see the general, the general path of that, that's part of our comp plan. And certainly one of the aspects of the acquisition work will enable us to help, help move that forward, um. Once, once we're able to procure the right level of funding for it. So I thought this might be an interesting slide for the planning commission, this actually shows the acquisition, so with the county. Um, you know, w- working through a strategy, approached the seller, we did it, um, through, uh, an anonymous LLC. And, and, and worked this, um, process over the past year. On May, um, mid-May, we, we assigned a contract to the board, the board accepted. The contract of four hundred and sixty two acres, which is all of the white hatched property. Um, that, that you see on the, on the image in front of you. Four hundred and sixty two acres at fifty eight million dollars. The, the yellow, um, highlight is what is in the current development area, so about. Just over half of that, two hundred and thirty two acres and change is in the, um, the current development area. And then everything else is in the rural area. Uh, and so we, through our due diligence, you know, um, uh, once we got under contract, we, you know, had to do our phase one testing. Assessing the, 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 the existing conditions, we wanted to make sure the property was as buil- buildable as we, as we think it is buildable. In order to move forward with it and, and that work has been done, we, we overlaid this, this initial, um, this initial concept. Again, this is just a concept plan, there's a lot of work that would, we, we would, we will be doing to, to further this. But, but we are able to cite that initial vision of kind of a campus extension. And we think we could easily double that footprint, if not more, uh, and that's some of the future work, once we get through closing. Talked about the acreage, the existing, um, you know, how the comp plan lays out. The, some of the intention on, on the, the buildout really will be focused on the, I'll say the twenty nine. Uh, Route twenty nine, which is the, the road that crosses the top of the screen. You know, kind of the, the, the west side and north is where the, the develop, the future development will be focused. The, the areas to the east, the, the lakes that you see on there, we, we look, um, to really keep as, um. As standoff and there, there's a lot of interest in turning this into some quality of life trails, amenities, um. The, we've heard from, from staff that work at Rivanah Station, there's a lot of interest in, you know, in that as an amenity to help just folks. You know, relax from the, from the day and, uh, we think that that's a great site for that. And, uh, really, uh, last couple of slides, this is a, a three D version, uh, an image if you will, of what that art of the possibility would look like, just to give you a perspective of it. Again, we, we believe that that will cover about fifty acres. Um, the, the concept that, that we're, that we're working through with state, federal, um. We'll, we'll be connecting into the, into the intelligence community, national security, security community is, um, what commissioner, um. Bev- Bevins had talked about, it's, it's kind of anchoring this corridor as a, as a technology corridor that can support our intelligence and national security. Work for the, for the, for the government and for our defense. We think there's an opportunity from North Fork all the way up to Green County, about eight miles, that, that could really turn, imagine. You know, Silicon Valley at the onset, we, we think that there's that level of, of potential for this corridor. And we believe Rivanah Station and, and the Rivanah Futures Project help, will help anchor that, uh, uh, anchor that work. And so, um. The, you know, we think there's an ecosystem in our community that supports it, we, uh, JT gave examples of. Of, of ideas that started at UVA that turned into a small business that, that's now expanding, we think there's a lot of pipeline opportunities. Um, to, to this function, um, you know, K, K through sixteen opportunities as well. And so, so those are some of the areas that, that we will move forward in our, in our concept as we work with state, federal and our military partners. And again, this, this is just a, you know, artist rendering of what, what that, that concept plan, um, is, there's a lot of work to do to, to affirm. There's a lot of work to do to, to affirm, uh, affirm the use and the needs. And finally, this is kind of the last slide. It's site control, uh, and having, having control of the property was, was a critical, uh, critical path to, to allow this work to happen. Uh, we have, uh, been briefing at the, at the state level, uh, with secretariats. We expect to be in front of the governor, um, this fall. Also be, will be briefing our congressional delegation. There, there, we believe there's a lot of interest and opportunities. Uh, the way we are doing the acquisition, we, this is, this is a, this is a long game project. Um, you know, it's a ten to fifteen year build out. And so, once we get to closing, which we're working, you know, all, all eyes are focused on that sometime in, you know, late fall. Um, you know, end of the calendar year, beginning of, of next year is kind of what we're looking at. Then, then we'll start pivoting to doing other things like master planning and, and broader engagement. And so, uh, we're really excited about it. You know, we think this will help, um, help, uh, again, retain that, that existing function there that is critical for defense, but also critical for our economy. And we think there's a, just a tremendous amount of upside for development that will support, uh, support the function. And, and part of our ask to the state is funding to help get us to, um, uh, uh, site readiness level of a tier four or so. You know, finish the road, get, be able to get the site ready for, uh, for future build out. And with that, I'll, I, I move through quickly, um, but I'll, I'll pause for questions. For this or anything else for JT or Emily?
Uh, that was, that was great. I can honestly say I was not familiar with this before tonight. Uh, so thank you for the presentation. For the sake of time, I will ask if the commissioner has any pertinent burning questions for Mr. Henry.
I just, I just have one is, Abmar County is the, is going to be the owner of this land, I guess, once everything's signed.
Yes, sir.
Will there be opportunities for the county to encourage and work with the defense community to, to build in a sustainable way using development or? And develop in a sensitive way on the site?
Uh, that's the expectation and, and certainly with, um, new military facilities, that's, that's, uh, important to, to their new construction. Resiliency is, is key. We, um, talking Fort Belvoir, they are, they're upgrading, uh, their fleet to, uh, to E V. So there's, there's a lot of money going into, um, into, uh, E V chargers, that kind of infrastructure. That's not exactly what you're asking, but I think there is that, that opportunity to have that kind of sustainable development. Not just for the D O D, but if we have academic partners that are there, you know, uh, private, uh, D O D, private industry. I think that they're all going to want to follow that, um, that, that level of design.
Any other questions? Henry, I want to say thank you again and to the whole economic development team for spending the last ninety minutes or probably more like a hundred minutes with us. Uh, very informative, very timely and, uh, thank you again. You're always welcome back, so.
Thanks. Appreciate all that you guys do for our community. Thank you very much.
Indeed. Have a great night. Thank you. With that, we'll call for, um, adjournment of the work session. We'll take a recess and then we'll come back for the public hearings that start at six, okay? Good evening, good evening, good evening. So welcome back. We will start our public hearings for tonight. The first one would be CCP twenty twenty-three zero 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 two. New Southern Feeder Pattern Elementary School. And just as a reminder that our only action tonight is, uh, related to the consistency of the proposal and not so much, um, I would say not in action or recommendation of whether facilities should be built there. I think that's a very important distinction, uh, as we have our deliberation and discussion tonight. So, um, with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Benish.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. David Benish, Development Process Manager, and we are reviewing a proposal to locate a Southern Feeder Pattern Elementary School, um, in the Avon Street corridor. And the proposal is for that school, uh, which elementary school would have, uh, grades K through five or some combination of those. It's a seventy-two thousand five hundred square foot building, uh, with, uh, capacity of five hundred. Those are general, uh, numbers. It's still under design. That's the, uh, concept. Uh, it's on property that's owned by the county school board, uh, previously the county. About fifteen point eight acres. It's located at the end of Founder's Place off of Mill Creek Drive. And I did want to go real quickly for you and the public, just, uh, as the chairman indicated, um, kind of touch base on what a CCP review is. It's a little bit different than some of the other reviews. Um, this proposed activity is considered a public use and public uses are permitted by right in all of our zoning districts. Um, a public use not specifically identified in our comp plan or land use plan. Uh, requires, uh, per state code, uh, determination of whether it's in stand, a substantial accord with our comprehensive plan. It, the CCP sort of looks at the location, character and extent of the facility, uh, and to, to determine that substantial accord. Um, community meetings by, uh, county board policy are held for all, uh, public facilities of this nature. Uh, and one was held with the, uh, Fifth and Avon Street C A C in September of this year. Uh, the P, the planning commission acts on CCPs and makes that finding of substantial accord. As Mr. Claiborne indicated, this is about whether it's, uh, friendly, consistent with the comprehensive plan. It is not whether to build a project or not, and it's not at the level of, uh, as fine a grain of review as you might see in a rezoning or a special use permit. Uh, no action is required of the board of supervisors, but the, um, your finding is forwarded them for information. They do have the option, uh, to, uh, appeal or call up that decision, but that is not a normal practice. Uh, you're charged with this, uh, final call. Um, the site is located, as I said, uh, on Founder's Place or at the end of, uh, what is now the end of Founder's Place. Sat of Monticello, uh, Fire Rescue Squad. Um, as you may recall, um, this site was subject to a prior compliance with the comprehensive plan review, uh, for the High School Center Two. And that proposal was found in compliance or in substantial accord with the comprehensive plan. That was back in June of, uh, twenty twenty, I believe. The previous P C action was, um, specific to the High School Center Two. Uh, so it was determined that this proposal being a different type of elementary school, uh, required a CCP. So while you may recall having reviewed this sort of action before, uh, it was determined that we needed to run this through you again. Uh, as an elementary school. I provided, uh, in your staff report and in this table here, the differences between those two schools or some of the, highlights some of the differences. Uh, the building square footage is roughly twelve thousand five hundred, uh, feet larger, uh, about a hundred more students potentially. Um, more staff, uh, more outdoor fields than I think was originally intended, um, for the High School Center. Although I believe that was an option to put fields there. Um, and you see the hours of operation and the number of buses as provided by, um, the applicant. And I'm going to be brief in this presentation to sort of hit some of the highlights and not giving you a long staff report. But in terms of the, um, land use and related recommendations of the comp plan. The comp plan calls for institutional uses on this site. Uh, the master plan notes that this could be a center location, uh, which is more of a mixed use, more intensive area as per the current master plan. It proposes, uh, an extension in Founder's Place, uh, that would connect to Route twenty. Um, the master plan did anticipate civic uses for this site. Uh, it did recommend a collaborative process and, uh, a community meeting and process to determine what uses are most appropriate for this area. I'm going to go quickly to the table from the master or the map from the master plan. Again, where Caligse Farm Drive is noted is the property in question. You see that it's, it's designated for institutional uses. Um, just real quickly regarding that, uh, center designation, what the narrative in the master plan did say is that civic uses on county property are expected. It did say that a collaborative community process, uh, should be undertaken before the county decides on what uses should be made of the property. Um, however, there has been a finding that, uh, a prior public school was appropriate on the site. It's always been noted that, um, schools were a potential location within the site and within the center. Uh, we don't believe that the continued, uh, use of, or potential use of this fifteen acre site. Procludes the possibility of doing that collaborative process in the future for the remaining area that's designated center, which is about forty-six acres. Uh, it's a map of, we don't need to go through that. That's the list of uses in case we want to refer to it. I think in summary, what we found is that the, um, proposal is consistent with the growth management policy to locate facilities in the development area. So that our, the areas that we propose most of our development to take place is adequately served by public facilities. Uh, it's consistent with the land use plan and the land use recommendation as institutional use. Um, and it's overall, uh, consistent with the community facilities, objectives, strategies and neighborhood model principles. We did raise, uh, two concerns about the site. Uh, we did feel like this school, um, uh, this proposal sort of concentrates schools and related, uh, public uses that are, uh, derived from those schools. It's concentrated them in one area of the development area and it has not, um, has left other areas a little less served, uh, by these services. Uh, we also feel like the traffic impacts, uh, on Avon Street, um, could be such with development of this area that it's going to advance the need for more road improvements in this area sooner. Uh, particularly given some of the patterns of traffic we've been seeing at elementary schools with, uh, the current, uh, usage of school buses and such. Uh, however, we felt like on balance, uh, the comp plan doesn't specify spatial distribution in any specific way in our comprehensive plan. We have, uh, other communities and, uh, development area neighborhoods that don't have school services such as Pan Tops. So we feel on balance, looking at all the, uh, issues outlined in the comprehensive plan, we do feel like it's within substantial accord. I've listed here the factors favorable literally from the staff report in case that's not needed for motion. Um, for your motion, uh, but in summary, staff recommends that the commission find the location character and extent. The proposed elementary school and public use, uh, in substantial accord with the comprehensive plan. I'll be happy to answer questions you might have. I do have motions for you at the time when you need that.
Thank you, Mr. Benish. Commissioners, any, any questions for staff? Uh, I'll start with my right. Commissioner Moore?
Uh, pass.
Pass.
I'll move to online to Commissioner Firehawk.
No, thank you.
All right, Commissioner Missile?
Um, I have a few questions, but I'm, I'm assuming, I, I'm debating whether to save these for after or now. Let me, let me shoot some out now real quickly. So there were, um, I know more than one site considered for this building, correct? Were there other sites that were, were considered for this elementary school?
Um, that's probably best for the applicant. I know that they did do an exhaustive search for sites and based on availability and timing, um, they've come, come to this site.
Got it. Um, I think the rest of them I'll save for the applicant. Thanks.
Commissioner, Chris Allen? Was there a traffic study done, part of the?
No.
There's no traffic study? When not required?
Not necessarily required. I think we advise, we get our advice from our transportation planning staff. Um, but at this point in time, we utilize the information that was provided in terms of, uh, the, just general, uh, vehicle counts and buses. And our experiences with traffic from the other schools, I think. I'll let Kevin sort of expand on that.
Yeah, thanks, uh, Kevin McDermott, I'm the, uh, Deputy Planning Director. Um, we, we typically use that, uh, thousand trip per day, uh, threshold to require traffic impact analysis for projects. And, and this one, uh, wouldn't reach that number.
Sorry, thank you.
Question, Evans?
Yep. Thank you, uh, Mr. Bennett. So, so just a couple of sort of transportation questions. And so, did I understand in, in the staff report that there was going to be a connection to Route twenty or Scottsville Road? And would that be through Galaxy Farm Lane?
Yes.
Okay. And then is there an expectation that, and maybe this is for us to have, this is for the applicant. Is there an expect, is there an expectation that there's going to be a nexus or a connection up to Mountain View Two also?
I think they can speak best to that, but there are, it, it did come up in the C A C meeting. I do know there is some topographic issues with connecting to it. I, I believe the applicant will say they'll be, they'll be looking to opportunities for at least pedestrian connection, but there are topographical issues with that connection.
I do have one question around transportation and this is more along like the master planning, if you will, of mapping out transportation projects. It was clear in the staff report that there were some concerns about that infrastructure there in terms of road network. I know we also use smart scale as well, but it's my understanding it takes six to ten years cradle to grave. So I'm curious, is this part, was this already part of upgrading in terms of project workflows and upgrading this stretch of road here? Or is this not on the radar at the moment? Could you talk a little bit about that?
Uh, yes, sir. Um, the, uh, there are some recommendations for transportation improvements in the area primarily up along Avon Street. So we had a, uh, had performed a, a Avon corridor study a number of years ago, uh, and looked at a series of different improvements. One of the areas of concern was the, uh, intersection of Mill Creek and Avon. Uh, it's currently a signalized intersection that in peak hours sees a lot of congestion, especially with the, um, Mountain View School. Uh, fairly close to that intersection, there's some, um, some difficulties with that. Uh, there was a recommendation to put a, um, a roundabout there. Uh, but other than that, we don't have any specific, uh, transportation recommendations. There is some, um, like curb and gutter and pedestrian infrastructure recommended down on twenty though as well.
Thank you. Commissioner Missile?
Thanks. Just one more related to that in terms of ongoing studies, I guess, in a sense. Under factors unfavorable, unfavorable, you mentioned the collaborative community process has not been undertaken, is recommended. In the southern and western neighborhoods, master plan is, are there plans in place to do that process?
Uh, priority wise, no. Um, in terms of say priority wise, within our work program.
Yeah.
Um, the applicant, uh, as noted in their application is intended to, uh, work with the public on the, the, um, this site and the design of that building. We feel like that center area, which really amounts to the county owned properties and some others besides the ones that are all abutting in this particular area. Um, provides is, is still, there hasn't been a determination for any other uses that we sort of have time perhaps. But right now it is not, uh, within our work program.
Thank you. Got it.
Any final questions for staff before we move on? No? All right, with that, I would like to invite the applicant. Welcome as always, you have ten minutes and you'll see a little lighting system in front of you. It'll be green for the majority of your presentation when it shifts to yellow. Uh, it's about a two minute warning roughly, so it's asked that you make your most pertinent points then, and then red means stop. And we look forward to, to hear what you have to say. So thank you, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for having me this evening. My name is Lindsay Sadi. I'm the Director of Building Services and I'll be digging into all those questions that you brought up. So we'll have some time to talk through them. All right. So building overview, I know Mr. Benish has been through a lot of this, but this was initially a site proposed for High School Center Two. So we've been through this process before for that, for that school use. Um, the site proposed is now for the new Southern Feeder Pattern Elementary. We need the school based on capacity issues at Mountain View. So this will be, this isn't bringing kids in from another area. It is splitting the Mountain View community into this, into this, uh, the new school. Approximately seventy-two thousand square feet and five hundred elementary students when it's fully grown out, that's the capacity. Interior spaces will include all the things you typically see in an elementary school or school. Classrooms, cafeteria, media center, gym, admin spaces, breakout rooms and support spaces. And the exterior, one of the things that's different from this, from the High School Center Two is we will have those playground spaces and also field spaces, which wasn't, it's not part of our center model. We will be looking, what we will obtain, compliance with the Virginia High Performance Buildings Act. And our, we do have a goal for the project of being net zero ready. These are just some spirit images. Our architect, V M D O is here with us this evening, showing a variety of spaces from their prior projects. We are early in design, so these are not what our spaces will look like, but they will probably be similar. We'll be looking at, you know, lots of bright colors, looking at sustainability features. And you'll see a recent up in the upper left-hand corner is, um, Bluestone Elementary that they recently completed. And our design team actually took a field trip out there last week to see what we loved about it and what we'd like to bring to this new school. So I'm going to go into our conceptual plan and community connectivity and talk through some of the neighborhood concepts that we're going to bring to this project. So I'm going to go into our conceptual plan and community connectivity and talk through some of the neighborhood concepts that we're going to bring to this project. So you've seen this image in the staff report. Um, our, our project is not, well, let me start over. Our civil engineers are performing a traffic study. That was one of the questions that came up of the area to determine existing and projected traffic volume on nearby roads. With and without the projector road that you see dashed in yellow. To determine how the importance of that, that relative road to the proposed school. We are currently planning to design that connector road that's dashed in yellow and bid it as an ad alternate. If the project bidding is favorable, that could be built. As noted in the staff report, when we had the C A C meeting, some members of the C A C questioned if the road connection was needed. And if it was determined that the road is not needed, it would open up more land for other community facilities, such as another field in that area that we wouldn't be able to fit. If the road was constructed or if we were saving room for the road. Here you, as we've already discussed, the county does own two adjacent parcels to this one. You'll see where those are located here. And we will, as part of this project, we will certainly not prohibit any access to those two county owned parcels as part of the project. So our building design is not dependent on the connection to founders, that the Founder's Place Galaxy Farm Road connection. We could live with it or without it as part of this project. It's a fifteen point acre site, um, one thirty three Galaxy Farm Lane. We are, as I said, uh, early in design, but we, we likely have a two or three story building on that site due to the, the size of the site and some rock impacts. We will be maximizing daylighting and views. We're, we're looking very carefully at the queuing space. We've learned from COVID that we have more parent drop off. So we're certainly looking to not add any traffic that would queue off of the site. And then sports fields, paved basketball court and some outdoor play space is definitely part of our project. This is a conceptual plan. I'll, I'll show two conceptual plans and then one that's built out a little bit further. The, this was shown at the C A C meeting, showing some, when you come off Founder's Place, having the parking, the bus drop off loop on that side of the property. And then the parent drop off and parking up in the front of, closer to um, Founder's Place as well. Showing a plop of a, of a school building, what that would look like, and then definitely the play space. In this next conceptual plan, you'll see we've moved the bus drop off area to the lower part of the school, just a different configuration. And a little bit of reconfiguration of the play spaces. And this prettier model, we've developed the site out a little bit further. Um, we're getting closer to what we think might be on the site. This is a three story building in some locations in the two um, classroom wings. We have three stories going on. And then we, you can see the play space, well, gym cafeteria. We're really working with the site to take advantage of the gorgeous views out to the mountains. So we're not obstructing those with our design. And then you'll see the play spaces and some of the um, landscaping that we'd intend to do around the site. This is the breakdown that was also included in the staff report, but for buses, um, five large, two smalls, what we anticipate coming to the site. We actually reduced this slightly based off, again, the, the COVID numbers, what we see for parent drop off and what we expect. So we increased parent drop off, so we expect about eighty, excuse me, eighty vehicles from parents dropping kids off. That tends to be more in the morning than the afternoon because there's extended day enrichment programs at the school. So that, that will stagger a bit more in the afternoon as far as the number of cars that you will see. Um, cars that will come to the site for as far as staff and visitors we have totaled there and then walking and biking. And this is a new discussion since the C A C meeting. Um, we just engaged with the school P T O to ask the question of how would you like to see the school operated? It will ultimately be a school board decision, but we're doing really active community engagement because the sites are so close. Because we did an extensive land search and couldn't find anything that was appropriate for us or available for us. And the Southwood Proffer wasn't a place that was considered, but that is a very small proffer. And um, the timing did not work out for us at all, even if we could deal with the space. We need this school now because of the issue, the capacity issues we have at Mountain View. So looking at a traditional P pre K through five model, each facility would operate as independent pre K through five schools, which would lead to a redistricting study. Um, nobody likes redistricting, so there, this question was coming up more and more, so we decided to open up to the community to get more feedback. We had a lot of people at the P T O meeting that gave us feedback and we'll be issuing a survey out to the community for those that couldn't make it to that meeting. A primary intermediate model would put pre K through two at the Mountain View existing school. And then there'd be an upper campus at the almost adjacent um, new school that would have grades three through five. We do that split because the Mountain View building does have larger classrooms in it already, which is what we tend to do for the pre K and kindergarten first grade students. And then the buildings would operate on a staggered schedule, so that would help that, that traffic flow as well to have that staggered schedule. Which might also happen with traditional P pre K through five, if that's how we go. Um, so one would tip, would probably be fifteen minutes earlier than the other. For example, a bus would pick up all students in the neighborhood. It would drop off the pre K through two and then go to the second campus to drop off the older children. As I mentioned, the design and placement of the building will not impede the future interconnected street plans that are in the comprehensive plan showed in the dotted yellow line. And there were questions about the pedestrian connectivity to the site, so this map outlines existing sidewalks. And we would certainly look at, you know, maintaining the existing ones, improving everything to the site and looking at other connections possibly to the Galaxy Farm neighborhood. And we're investigating with our civil engineers how we can connect to the Mountain View existing campus. For, it wouldn't be vehicular, it'd be a pedestrian connection. Our properties touch. Uh, um, but we don't have like a pathway that we own, so we're looking to see what we could do to, to make those connect. So as part of the neighborhood model design, um, this project looks to incorporate outdoor learning spaces, community usage amenities, fields and playgrounds. The school board does have a very active community use program. We have a policy in place. There is very, very high demand for our buildings that are in more urban areas. They are used day, night, weekends, as much as people can get in them. We have tons of sports programs. Um, and the fields outside are used heavily and scheduled by parks and recs, so more fields in this area would certainly be used and I think appreciated by the community. Just to give you a feel for how much community usage at Mountain View School over the past five years has facilitated over six thousand events. So it's pretty extensive with fifty five user groups. You can see a list of different groups that have used our facilities and we'd expect that they would also like to use a new one. Um, and we, as I mentioned, increasing demand for community usage in our centrally located schools. Our next steps are continued our community engagement. We're doing extensive community engagement through surveys, through um, meeting people in their neighborhoods. That's our next step, P T O meetings. Uh, all of our meeting materials are in Spanish and English, so we just, we can make sure we reach everybody. And the, the next step for our presentation to the school board is schematic design presentation on December fourteenth is planned. Project schedule, we're looking at programming through, through September, we are programming schematic design will go through December. Designs of development will go December through May twenty twenty four. You can see our site plan and utility plan development, bidding and construction September twenty twenty four through July twenty twenty six. And to be open for the August twenty twenty six school year. I finished with ten seconds.
Hey, thank you. Um, I'll bring it to the commission for questions. I'll start with Commissioner Vivens.
Thank you, Chair. Um, so I would be remiss, I would be, I would be untruthful if I didn't say, I think this is an appropriate place. For a school, given that in my district, we have a whole bunch of schools on, on a campus. And so I understand the process, I understand the, the model well, what I'm, what I'm struggling with is not for me to say. Cause Mr. Benish has said, this is not what I'm supposed to be thinking about, but I can't control my, the, the, the things in my head. And so what it would be interesting to see if, if, if perhaps the middle school could go there. And that children could go to the Walton School as an elementary school. So in fact, children could go from Journey to whatever the middle school would be to Monticello, much like the model. Half of the, or two thirds of the model at uh, at, at, at Western, where you have Western, I think it's brown across the street. And we're in, in Lamb's Lane Campus where you, as you know, we've got the full suite, plus we've got some additional schooling there. I think that would be, that would actually sort of be helpful to the community. And I think it would give some flow to that, but I'm just putting that out there as a bit of seasoning. I also need to just say, Chair, I, I remain disappointed. That there wasn't a way to put a walkable school in the Southwood community. I believe the community, this community, Albemarle Camp community did a, a whole host of things to make that work for that particular development. And here was a perfect opportunity for that community or that developer to do something for this community. And I remain, I remain disappointed. Let it be shown that my hand is to my heart. That I remain disappointed that there wasn't a way to facilitate a school being, you know, community. That's going to have close to a thousand households when it's fully built. And we can't have enough room to put a walkable school there. So Chair, I just have to say that again for the third time, but otherwise, I, I, you've, you've answered my questions. I hope there'll be whatever schools there. There'll be some way to get to, to Mountain View because I think that would be helpful for you. And then as you figure out whatever the connection is to twenty, that you do that in a way that doesn't, you know, that makes us still good citizens. However, that, that may be, so thank you, Chair.
Of course. Commissioner Kurzak? Thank you for your presentation. Appreciate it. And just following up on that last point of, in terms of connectivity. And this is where I think a traffic study would be very helpful, whether it's required or not. Um, I think uh, the staff knows my feeling about this limit about a thousand cars, or I thought it was less than that at some point. But I don't know if that was, if that was increased recently. Um, but it's a cumulative effect, so we can look at one development, but if that development, say it's nine hundred cars and you're not studying. And then there's another development next door that's eight hundred, they're studying that one either. So, but the combination is over a thousand. I do think it's going to be helpful and it, it shows that you're, you're actually paying attention to what's being, the impact that you're doing uh, to the roads. And whether or not you're, you're going to need that connection. So you'll have more information to work, so I would encourage um, the development to look at. A, a traffic study.
Thanks. Uh, thanks for the presentation. That was really helpful. Uh, and you answered a bunch of my questions, so I appreciate that. Just to have a couple of additional ones. One is, you mentioned obviously actually doing a T I A voluntarily. What is your intention? Um, what do you intend to do with the findings of that T I A?
It is in our scope to have our civil engineers do that traffic study. I, although that the connector road is in the comprehensive plan. If it showed that, that, that the connector wouldn't improve anything, I think our argument would be, we'd love to put a field there instead. But I think that, that might be part of a larger process.
Thanks. So just following up on that, I was actually envisioning, I mean, it feels a little bit like a chicken and an egg thing where, you know, you usually do a T I A first and then you decide on your development program and the capacity of your site based on that. And you understand the implications of building that capacity on the adjoining roads. So seems like you've got the capacity, the goals, the need, but you're not quite sure what is happening on the adjoining roads yet. So I'd be curious, and, and I guess this is related to the project schedule. What if you find that with Commissioner Karazan's note about background traffic and cumulative impacts of this? That you, you are at a tipping point. Would you, I guess, then reconsider your project schedule and build some of that? Some of those improvements into the scope or?
So I guess we'd be looking at, if that, if the traffic studies showed that that connector road truly improved flow and we, we had a flow issue to deal with.
Or turn lanes and some of the external streets or whatever.
If the project budget allowed would be my answer to that. So if we, the building and the site is our first priority. And then if that doesn't, how we set up the additives in the bid process.
Got it.
And we'd certainly go that pathway if it showed to be a productive use of funds.
I, yeah, I'm, I'm Matt Werben, Deputy Director of Building Services. I can add two points to, to your line of questioning around the road. So um, for one, the two termini would be existing roads. Um, and so we would be connecting to the existing Founder's Place Road. And then the other terminus would be connecting to the existing Galaxy Farm Road lane, I forget. Um, and so from, from our project's perspective, those would be the, the termini. Um, I will say that part of, uh, we're working with Timmons Group as a civil engineering firm, and they are here today if you have any specific questions. I know that they've already done traffic counts on surrounding roads in the area. Um, but we're still waiting on that initial data back um, or analysis to, to, to determine our next steps. But one of the things that we have asked them to study as part of that um, uh, traffic impact analysis. Is even the possibility of, is there a need for a roundabout at Mill Creek and Founder's Place?
Right.
Um, you know, we, we have Monticello High School right across the street.
Yeah.
Um, and we know that the southern parking lot at Monticello has traffic exiting problems around football games into the school. And so a, a, a solution such as that would provide another um, ingress or egress out of Monticello even. That would, would serve the community as a whole. So, so those are all things that we've, we've asked Timmons to study.
Right.
Um, but I, I think, I think Lindsay's right. Um, you know, part, part of this is budget too, right? So the project was, was funded for a school. It wasn't funded as a transportation project. Um, which is why we're, we're bidding it as an additive, um, and hope that we can construct it if, if budget allows. But the Board of Supervisors really only funded the school portion.
Which is, I can't help myself. I mean, that's just interesting, right? I mean, impacts that are caused by the project that are not funded, but the project could go forward without those impacts being mitigated. Just seems a little, uh, sorry, that was editorial. Um, one quick other question. I know there's a fire station at the, or a, I assume those are, they're all included in the discussions and terms of impact.
We do not want to block a fire engine.
Yeah, all right, got it. Thank you. That's all.
Thank you. I'm going on to Commissioner Firehawk.
Sorry, trouble clicking my mouse. Uh, I, I don't really have any questions for the applicant. I think that the use is appropriate in that location. I mean, uh, all I ever want to comment on at this point is the site plan, but that's not our charge this evening. So, um, when, and when, as you look at um, designs though for the site, you might also check out another V M D O project. The Bellmead School in Richmond, Virginia. Uh, we worked on a, doing a sort of outdoor learning center with some vacant property next to that. It became a really nice nexus of use of the outdoor space around the school instead of just sort of the traditional mode landscape. So, uh, maybe take a look at that. It's a short field trip.
Awesome. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Murray?
I think the site is appropriate, um, just as Karen said. I'll offer my own suggestion as other people have. If you're looking at an outdoor learning center, it's worth noting that the Virginia Department of Game and Land Fisheries has, has often funded, um, they funded the rain garden, sorry. They, they funded the um, the biofilter at Crowe's Elementary under the condition that was part of the education, part of an educational curriculum. So if that's something that you're willing to do to include something like that in your educational curriculum. Then you might reach out to them because they do have funding for that sort of thing.
Thank you.
Uh, thanks again for the presentation. Um, and again, I think, uh, actually a quick question. Was there a traffic study done when it was proposed for a, a high school center?
We did not have a track, a traffic site at that time.
Gotcha, gotcha, gotcha. Um, well, honestly, uh, uh, it, it's nice to have a presentation and, and with a school on one side and a high school on the other side. To not have anybody complain that it doesn't meet neighborhood character, um, because it clearly does. Um, and uh, I just sort of appreciate the, 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 the split model with P K through second and then third through fifth. I think that's actually a wise idea to have some staggered schedule that will probably help with that as well. Um, uh, helps with both the district lines and also the traffic situation. And uh, I know this is not your department, but if uh, somebody at the schools might consider that for Woodbrook and Agner Hurt, it also seems like something worth considering.
I'll pass that along.
Thank you.
Um, I'll ask just a couple of questions before we, we get to the open for the public hearing. Um, how long do you anticipate the structure being around, right? This investment is for X amount of years looking forward.
I think if you look at our existing building stock, I can't remember our weighted average age, sixty years approximately, fifty. Over fifty years for our existing building stock and that's weighted with, you know, our renovations calculate into that. We have some very old schools. I'm, we want this to be around as long as it possibly can be. I don't know, V M D O has a better answer of like, what we are, what typically the age is that we're building for, but at least fifty. But we haven't taken a building down yet after fifty years for, in the school division.
Yeah, and I'm asking a question just to kind of illustrate a couple of points. One, I just want to double down on some of the comments you're hearing about the transportation and how that's magnified, right? It's going to be there fifty, sixty, seventy years, the importance of that piece. But also, um, in regards to the comprehensive plan, we have equity and climate action as two anchor pieces to that. As well, I know you have a, a fantastic architect. I'm very familiar with V M D O. I would just ask, you know, as we are using this site, right? How do we make this an example? All right, an example of what it means to have a great learning facility, right? Um, as we doing this, right? So that's the trade off, right, for this investment. How do we make it an example? I just want to make one comment about the community engagement piece and. I just want to make one comment about the community engagement piece and this is something that we are still grappling with in terms of AC forty-four, right? Getting. Reasonable amounts of responses and doing the same kinds of tools that you're using. Um, just putting a plug in for, you have to go beyond ordinary boundaries.
Yep.
With that. Um, that slide was nice, but this from our own personal experience, the results that we get are. Um, there's room for improvement, right? There's opportunity to grow, so. Being innovative in that space, I think is going to be very important. So. Any other questions before we, yes, yes.
Just to, to, just a, a question and, 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 and a question, an observation given what you just said and what our colleagues just said. So if the other access road is going to be Galaxy Lane Farm. That was positioned to us as this sort of. Uh. Higher end, but more modest footprint. Um, or more modest footprint, but middle, middle, middle. Middle density community. So the whole idea that there would be lots of traffic flowing through that. That community is not what I think they were anticipating, at least when they came before us. Um, and so being able to balance. I'm just thinking about balancing, since I live on a road that only has one way out and one way in. And what it's like to have to, to navigate school traffic. Twice a day. Um, I'm just thinking that's probably, that community is probably not expecting that to happen. At a four hundred thousand plus price tag for those cottages when they get built. So perhaps using some of the county's road there to put a road in might. Would A come to, with some of our colleagues saying, also continue for this project to be considered a good neighbor. Since it really was not, I don't believe that community was constructed or was envisioned to be a pathway to the. To a school. Chair, and then if you could have a non, on your appendix A, could you just tell us when the, when the enrollment and capacity projections were done? When they were product, when that production.
October twenty twenty-three.
So, so it's, it's this month, okay?
That just went, um, before the long range planners in their advisory report to the school board.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to open up for the public hearing. Um. With that, I only have one person present to sign up to speak and that is David Frazier. Alright, and, and welcome to the podium. We'll allot three minutes and. By the same rules apply, I'll go from green to yellow, which means, uh, just make your most pertinent points and. Red is concludes, so floor is yours.
Well, thank you and, um, thank you for all the information. It's been very helpful. Um.
I'm sorry, if you could say your name and your general vicinity of where you're from.
My name's David Frazier and, uh, we, my parents live at one oh seven Galaxy Farm Lane. We're right in the middle of all this that's happening. Uh, between the new development, the schools, all that has happened, uh, the Almar Rehab Center. Um, forgive us if we feel a little claustrophobic and, uh, concerned. Um, one of the things that I'm concerned about is. The one that's been mentioned several times. Number one, the collaborative community process has not been undertaken as recommended. I don't know why that has been neglected, but. I definitely would like to see that rectified and, uh, there'd be a little bit more community involvement in the process. Would be helpful. I know there was a meeting on September the twenty-first. My parents are eighty-eight and eighty-five. They were not able to attend. I was not able to attend to be there as their representative. Some of my other concerns are. Impacts to quality of life for my parents. And for whoever has the property after them. Um, property values, how will they be affected? Right now we have beautiful views of the mountains. To the south and you're talking about putting a three-story building directly in front of their property. Um, also, I feel like the traffic estimates that were. Given by the applicant were woefully low. Considering the amount of traffic that we already see, um. I guess that's Mill Creek Drive that goes in front of the high school. Is that correct? Um. The amount of traffic that comes out of there and out of the elementary school Mountain View. Um, at peak times is amazing, so I think. Going forward, the traffic study absolutely has to be done. Because you, you have all these different factors, you know, different add-ons. So we're adding on a community. Just down the hill from my parents, that's I think fifty-seven or fifty-nine units, something like that. We're adding on those. Of course, they didn't meet the threshold for a traffic study, but we have these other schools. Around and each one of them, we're adding on one at a time. But the cu- commu- cumulative effect, I think, is what you brought up. And I think that's a valid issue that needs to be, um, looked at. Those are my major concerns. I have forty-four seconds, but. Um. I got it out plenty of time. Thank you.
Uh, thank you. Is there anyone else who did not sign up but wishes to speak to this topic that's here in person? Okay, so no one come forward. Madam Clerk, is there anyone online who would like to speak to this topic?
No, sir, there isn't.
Alright, I'll invite the applicant if they wish to make any closing remarks based on what you've heard. Or you can forego that opportunity. Good? Alright. And with that, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. And I will bring it into the commission for, um, any thoughts, reactions to what you've heard, um. Before we move forward. Other additional comments? Okay. Hearing none? Can we have the, the motions, uh, presented?
I, I had a question. Sorry, I couldn't.
I guess I have one question while the motion's coming up, um. Is there, is there, I guess this is a matter of. Process. Is there a way to add conditions to this? I don't think there is, but.
No, there's not. It's, it's simply, is it in conformance of the comprehensive plan or not?
Got it. Thank you.
Good question. Oh, is it? Oh, sorry, that's. Oh, oh, sorry. We're sure Firehawk. Didn't see the little yellow hand.
That's right. I know you're used to my big mouth. Um. I, I just wanted to, um. I, I, I appreciate that the question was just asked, I had the same question. So I understand we can't put conditions. We can just say the use is appropriate or not. But I, I would imagine that we could. Find the use appropriate, but still say that we strongly encourage or request the applicant to still. Undergo the community process. Because there, there is still things that can be done at this site planning stage. What, you know, the positioning of the buildings, the height of the buildings, even if we, the, we find that. Yes, this is a good location for the school. That, that more, certainly more work could be done to make the site harmonious with the neighborhood. That's it.
That's, that's a great comment and I would assume that. The staff report from this that has factors as unfavorable, that would be one listed, will go onto the board and they would also get a record. Of the pertinent points of our discussion as well. So I'm assuming that will be packaged up to the board as this moves forward.
So if, if the, if the planning commission wanted to sustain a motion like that, what the motion would be, be a motion to find. Um, the plan in compliance with the comprehensive plan or not. And, and to recommend and then recommend whatever the planning commission, whatever else the planning commission wished to recommend.
Fair enough. And so a commission, what I'm hearing, I think there is. Overwhelming consensus around what I'm hearing is that, yes, from a comprehensive plan standpoint. Certainly is viable. Um, some of those concerns that are raised, one is the community engagement process. Traffic, those are two that really jumped out. Listen to our deliberation. Is there anything else? Anyone like to make a motion accordingly?
Chair, I would, I would also recommend, I would also just add to our, to our, to our deliberation that this will get reported back to the school board. So, you know, this is, this doesn't just sit in this ECO, so it'll go to the board, it'll go. So Chair, I'd just like to sort of share this, it'll more than likely go to the superintendent of schools and has a report to them. And then, so there's, there will be other individuals within the school's hierarchy. And within the school's hierarchy that will hear these comments.
Very well, thank you. There are commissioners that would like to make a motion.
Sure, I'm happy to make the motion. I move to find that the location, character and extent of the proposed elementary school and public use thereof to be in substantial accord. With the comprehensive plan for the reasons identified as favorable factors in the staff report. And I would also like to recommend. And underscore the discussion here related to transportation impact analysis. And community engagement and moving those two processes forward.
Very well. Is there a second?
No second.
Alright, any further discussion? Alright, hearing none. Madam Clerk, would you want to call in a roll?
Yes. Mr. Bivins?
Aye.
Mr. Karazana?
Aye.
Mr. Missile?
Aye.
Mr. Clyburn?
Aye.
Mr. Murray?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Firehawk?
Aye.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you. I thank you to the applicant for your, your presentation. Um, moving to our next public hearing, we have ZMA. Twenty twenty-one zero 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 one six North Fork UVA Discovery Park. Um, Mr. Missile would like to share a few words and a couple of other commissioners as well before we get started.
Great, thank you Chair. Uh, I have a personal interest in a business that may realize a reasonable foreseeable benefit. As a result of the transaction identified as North Fork UVA Discovery Park. ZMA twenty twenty-one dash sixteen. I declare that I am disqualifying myself from participating in this transaction. And request that this fact be recorded in the appropriate public records for a period of five years. Uh, and I'll also be leaving this meeting.
Alright.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Alright, Commissioner Karazano?
Uh, thank you. Uh, Chair, uh, in the interest of full disclosure, I am a, an employee of the University of Virginia. The pending application is for the UVA Foundation, which is a separate entity. I believe that I am able to consider the pending application fairly objectively and in the public interest. But wanted to disclose my employment for record.
Very good, very good. Commissioner Murray?
In the interest of full disclosure, I am also employed by the University of Virginia. The pending application is by the UVA Foundation, which is a separate entity. I believe I am able to consider the pending application fairly objectively. And in the public interest, wanted to disclose my employment for the record. You may.
Alright, Commissioner Moore?
Uh. In the interest of full disclosure, I too am employed by the University of Virginia. The, uh, pending application is by the UVA Foundation, which is a separate entity. I believe I'm able to consider the pending application fairly objectively and in the public interest. But did want to disclose my employment for the record.
Alright, and I went to Virginia Tech and I have no affiliation with UVA. Oh, Commissioner Firehawk?
Well, I do not have that particular statement in front of me, but I need to also disclose that I am an employee of the University of Virginia. I am not employed by the University of Virginia Foundation, but I believe I will be able to render a fair and balanced. Uh, judgment on this matter regardless of my employment status.
Alright, thank you. Commissioner Bivins, you good?
Fine.
I think we're only two standing. We're only two left.
I've already made my comment.
Alright. Alright, Mr. Fritz, welcome. So we'll turn it over to you.
Uh, Bill Fritz with Community Development Department and I too did not go to the University of Virginia. I went to Mary Washington College, so. Um, I have a very brief presentation for you tonight. You have a, you have a very lengthy staff report, so instead of me going through everything that's in the staff report. I, I figured I'd just hit some of the highlights and I'd be happy to answer your questions. Just to orient you real, uh, quick, um, I think we all know where, where this property is, but I wanted to go ahead and highlight it. Uh, it's a very large piece of property running all the way from Airport Road. All the way up to the North Fork Ravanna River and between, uh, Dickerson Road and Route twenty-nine near the airport. Some of the features of this particular development are. Excuse me, let's get my notes. So this is a, a, just a, a page from the application plan that's in your packet. And I wanted to point out some of the features. So this area has single-family attached proposed in it. This area has multifamily, single-family detached and single-family attached units. This area has multifamily, single-family attached and commercial office. And this area has commercial and office. The remaining area is, is the industrial area. There's an entrance existing on Airport Road. Uh, this particular entrance, this particular intersection is going to be upgraded with a, uh, roundabout. The applicant has proffered significant, uh, improvements, uh, uh, proffered land for these improvements. And, uh, a significant amount of cash associated with that. There's another entrance that is directly on Route twenty-nine. There are proffers for improvements to this in, entrance and intersection also that are based on the level of development. So improvements will occur as development occurs. There's an existing entrance up here on Quail Run, this arrow, uh, at the top of the screen. Uh, nothing is changing with this. It's a relatively minor entrance. It's a secondary access point. Actually a tertiary access point. And there is a location for a potential connection to, uh, adjacent property to the east. North is at the top of this map, uh, adjacent property to the east. Uh, that could potentially allow access that property to, to this property and maybe even down to Route twenty-nine. The applicant has proffered, uh, and incorporated improvements to the greenway and trail system that runs along the northern portion of this property, including along the North Fork Ravanna. And there's also a recreational facility, uh, Dabney Park that's referenced in some of the documents you have. That's located fairly central to the property. Also included in this application is, in the application plan, uh, is proposed grading. This is important because it would allow the grading to occur prior to. Uh, the smittle of site plans. It's something that we encourage particularly on, uh, industrial, uh, planned industrial parks. The proposed grading that's shown does impact steep slopes in several locations. We've analyzed those locations. It's important to note that area B five, which is the one that's right on Route twenty-nine. The slopes in that area have already been approved by the Board of Supervisors for, uh, critical slopes disturbance. But we're showing them here also. Wanted to point this out, that this is included in the application. You don't need to take a separate action because if the development is approved. Disturbance of these slopes would then be approved by virtue of them being shown on the approved application plan. That's the presentation I have for you, but I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have. There are significant proffers. I'd like to point out that the industrial, uh, portion of this property is remaining largely unchanged and the prior rezonings. Excuse me, the prior rezoning on this property had a number of proffers and all those proffers are being retained or enhanced in some way.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Fritz. Questions for staff? I'll start with Commissioner Moore.
I'll probably have questions after the presentation.
Very well. Commissioner Murray?
I'll pass for now.
Alright, Commissioner Firehawk? Commissioner Karazana?
Thank you for the presentation. Well, thank you.
Question of the proffers and are they? It's my understanding that there's, there's triggers for the level of proffers and when they take it.
Correct.
Correct. Can you talk a little bit about that? So what is the triggers and what? What is associated with the next level of proffers?
So there are, there are different triggers for a variety of different things. So for example. Um, and my, I'd have to pull them out and look at them and to remember them all, but, uh, to take the. Intersection improvements on Route twenty-nine as one, when traffic reaches certain points, then certain improvements are made. When a certain number of residential units are constructed within the residential portion, then certain other proffers are triggered in terms of. Uh, construction improvements in Dabney Park or trail systems. There are proffers that are included for the. Uh, right of way for the, uh, roundabout and. Um, yeah, I believe it's yearly. There's, there's payments that are included with that. When the greenway trails are built, that triggers. Either dedication of land and when greenways are completed by the county, that triggers. Construction of other trails within the development that would then link to those trails. That gives you an idea of sort of the scope of how these improvements have all been done or proffers have all been done.
Yeah, with the, it's the traffic ones that you mentioned in particular with. This concept of as there's development and, and, and they do studies to determine that that development is going to create. More congestion. There are proffers that are required in order to. Achieve that development.
Correct. And, and what the applicant has done and staff concurs with is instead of proffering certain improvements that would be done because these. is instead of proffering certain improvements that would be done, because these triggers are going to occur at some point in the future. We don't necessarily know what the most appropriate things would, uh, improve traffic when that occurs, because there's going to be other development that's occurring in the area. So this, these cash proffers that are triggered at certain levels of development will allow the county to employ a certain flexibility to most appropriately address the transportation needs at the time the need is generated.
And, and I think this is a very appropriate and logical approach, and I think Mr. McDermott probably knows where I'm going with this question. And how we can consider this for other developments that are creating these challenges in other parts of the county. So this is an appropriate measure that we obviously have the tools and the means to, to imply that we should be considering in other locations as well. All right, great, good point. Commissioner Bivins?
I'm, I'm fine, uh, Chair, I'm fine. I would just offer sort of a, an interesting sort of counterpoint to my colleague here where, where we talk about sort of phased proffers for transportation, let us not also, let's also take into consideration, one of the reasons that that works here is because you've got such a vast and open green space, it's got probably decades of development ahead of it. And unfortunately, it may, while, while it may take decades to develop some of the things that we see, they usually want to get it done in one bite. And so I think what I'm going to challenge you to do is to think about how do we, how do we tune that in? Those kinds of one, where they have a, they have a, a hard cutoff where they expect to have a grand opening in some place, because I think you're on to something, but I think this, that, this process fits very nicely here because we really are talking about a, a flow of development as opposed to, uh, an endpoint.
Yeah, absolutely, there's, there's a, there's a, a simplified approach here because there's one owner. However, the logic, I think, can still stand. It's how we consider applying it in a situation where you have multiple developments, still one green area that's being developed through time, right, wherever that might be, Croze, uh, and how you then think about that, how can we begin to, to apply these triggers?
I, I agree, because clearly the last big piece that we had, and Chair, I'll leave this alone and, and sort of go, go quiet for a moment, is that if we had done that, when they first did that development out there and the one, I think, I forget White Gate or White Gables, whatever it was called, or Montclair, I think it's called now, then in fact, the entire community would have had to bear the sort of the, the complicating issues of how are we going to deal with this incremental traffic? What, what I've always struggled with is how, why do we put that on the one, on the last to the table? When in fact, as we've seen there, it's, it's a cumulative effect of four, two or three thousand houses there that are adding, and not the hundred and twenty that are coming at the last bit, so how do we think about that? As we're thinking through the comp plan, how do we think about those, that kind of blending?
And that's why I'm bringing it up, but thank you for indulging our.
Indulge our conversation, a conversation that we could only do if we were in meeting and session.
That's right, so, very good. With, with that, I'm gonna invite the applicant to come forth with a presentation. And welcome.
Uh, thank you very much, I'm Tim Rose, I'm the Chief Executive Officer of the University of Virginia Foundation. And, uh, with me tonight are two of my colleagues, Frank Hancock and Deborah Van Ursel, who are the leaders on this project. So, we also have our engineers and legal team here as well. Uh, the University of Virginia Foundation provides real estate and other services to the University of Virginia. And as part of that, we're the owner of the North Fork, uh, Research Park. I stood in front of this group about thirty years ago down the hall to get the original, uh, piece of land approved. Uh, and we hope that you've been pleased with the development that we've, um, helped lead there. Uh, our goal is with the park is to support the university's vision for, uh, fostering research and also to provide an economic development engine of sorts for the community. Uh, university affiliated research parks across country have transitioned in our transitioning from we're just a research park to we are a twenty-four-seven live-work-play community. And our proposal, our request today is to, uh, allow that to happen at the park. We, uh, um, hope that this housing would serve both the park and the employment center that is, uh, obviously has taken, uh, a significant growth in that area and, and of course, the city and the county. If we obtain, uh, this rezoning, uh, we'll, our first thing we'll do is, um, communicate with potential housing developers, both market and affordable housing. On the affordable housing, it would be similar to the process that we're going through closer to the city. And, um, we, um, uh, need them on, on our team to help us, assist us with this. So with that, I will introduce Valerie Long, who is our legal counsel, and she'll walk through the proposal.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission, Valerie Long, here representing, uh, the applicant, the foundation, as Mr. Rose said. First, I want to thank, uh, Mr. Fritz and Mr. McDermott and many other people on the community development team, we've been working on this for, I believe, three years now. It is a challenging process when you have such a large project like the Research Park, and obviously, as you all have alluded, there is a lot going on around this area. So part of the challenge has been, you know, the, a very detailed, uh, traffic study and analysis of that and working collaboratively with, um, the county staff and VDOT to identify the appropriate proffers to address those transportation challenges, particularly given that there's congestion there already, and even without any changes at North Fork, that will continue. But I'll go through this, again, many of you are familiar with it, and as, um, Mr. Rosen indicated, um, the main goal here is to create a twenty-four-seven live-work-play community that has lots of activity going on all the time. It will enhance the economic development potential at North Fork as well as throughout that in the entire county. It, you know, will provide for a mixture of housing, uh, different types of housing and different price points in a strategic location near a very large employment center. It functions as an amenity for economic development prospects. Those prospective tenants, their employees want to have opportunities to live near where they work and hopefully have shorter commutes than perhaps where they might be living and working now. Um, it also helps support transit service like the new, um, Microcat service that is on its way and would include this area. It enables the foundation to leverage the park's existing natural assets, its trail systems, all of the amenities, as you may know, there's a cafe and a gym and lots, you know, miles of trails and walking paths. And again, it introduces this twenty-four-seven mix of uses to enliven and activate the park. So with residents there, living there and, and perhaps working there as well, you'll have families enjoying the playground areas and the recreational fields, um, enjoying the paths and the trails and the future restaurants and so forth. So that's a lot about what this will do and, um, in essence, the infrastructure is there already for these residents. I know that's not always the case or rarely the case with, uh, particularly residential rezonings. Also wanted to touch briefly on the comprehensive plan, um, there's a lot going on in this map too, but inside the dash blue line is North Fork, and you can see that the purple area is the planned, is the flex mixed-use or a flex mixed-use R and D light industrial area. And, and the green is of course the open space, and we included a quote from the existing Places Twenty-Nine Master Plan that actually contemplated having residential, um, units here in North Fork in the future. Uh, this was the original plan approved back in nineteen ninety-six. I'm going to orient it so that it is the same direction as all of the plans you'll see currently. Uh, but that was the plan back then. Our plan set for tonight's application is much longer and more detailed. Um, but we wanted to be able to show how similar the core elements are within the park. You have the same uh, road network, the same, essentially the same, um, development bays or blocks there with, you know, C-B five, B-six, et cetera. On the far left of your screen, you can see the original Block D, the area in the yellow dash line that was added to the park, the foundation acquired that after the original ninety-six approval. So that was then owned by the foundation and then with a later rezoning application, that land was also added to the Research Park. That was the last time I was here working on the North Fork Park, which was, it was approved in two thousand and ten. So about every thirteen years, I think, we're due for an update. Um, quick summary on just the key elements, um, as we noted, so that, let me back up a bit. The, the key thing to know or understand is that a portion of the park will be rezoned to neighborhood model district. The rest will stay as zoned planned development industrial park. And the, the sole reason to make the change to neighborhood model district is to allow residential, that is the only district that actually allows both residential and non-residential. There's also two parcels along, uh, Route twenty-nine that I'll highlight in a moment that have been owned by the foundation for a long time but are not actually part of the park. And so we felt that it was appropriate to officially add them to it. And we're amending the proffers to address the impacts, we're modernizing the terminology, making a number of other changes as Mr. Fritz indicated, building on the historical proffers that have been in place for so long. For clarification, um, all of the uses that are allowed now at North Fork will continue to be allowed in everywhere in the park. So the blocks that we're proposing to rezone to neighborhood model development district or neighborhood model district will not preclude the planned development industrial park uses there, it's just an additive. So again, the existing approvals permit up to three point seven million square feet of non-residential and PDIP uses. Um, that will continue, it is an addition, not a reduction from the employment area land. And as has been the case since nineteen ninety-six, the, um, foundation commits to retaining two hundred acres minimum of open space. And again, as we, as Mr. Rose indicated, there'll be affordable housing as well. This is the proposed application plan. Um, in the lower center are the two parcels, Blocks G one and G two that I mentioned that again, have been owned by the foundation for some time. We're proposing to rezone those also to planned development industrial park, I think one is currently zoned highway commercial and the others are one or are two. But this is the application plan that would be binding, um, development of the park in the future would have to be in general accord with this plant, this image as well as lots of details that are on this page and in other pages of the application plan set. But this is the general framework, and again, you can see the continuation of the existing transportation network and design that has existed from the beginning. This is an illustrative plan showing how that, how the park could be developed, um, based on that application plan. This is a close-up of how the neighborhood model district blocks could be developed, and I wanted just add one clarification. Uh, Mr. Fritz indicated at the beginning sort of what is shown on this plan. Townhouses here, for example, and some multifamily and townhouses and single families here. Those are merely illustrative examples of what could go there. All of the different types of housing units are permitted in all of the neighborhood model districts. And this is just showing the specific block plan for the neighborhood model district. There's also a specific green space plan. And this is just bringing you back to, to note that in addition to the neighborhood model district plan, all of the areas, the blue blocks, those are the planned development industrial park blocks, and tho- that will continue to be the application plan for those blocks as well. Um, running out of time here, I'm happy to walk through some of the proffers that we have for Parks and Rec as well as transportation, although Mr. Fritz covered them, I'm happy to elaborate if there are any additional questions about those issues.
Sure, I'll tell you, if you could hit the proffers very quickly, and then as the public has comments, we'll welcome you back for additional five minutes, so.
So I'll start here, this is the, what we call the Parks and Rec proffers, Parks and Recreation. There were existing proffers that talk about the trails and so forth in the park, the exhibits were very difficult to read, there was a lot of confusion about what's required when. The new proffers are much more clear about what is exactly required and when, and the start, the, excuse me, the first one, oh, I thought, there we go, is, and this has been in the, the proffers from the beginning, is that the foundation would build a recreational field and, um, recreation area in this location that includes a field, parking lot, restaurant, restrooms, et cetera, picnic area. And then the second is, this is a new, uh, proffer is to build trails or a trail from the Dabney Park Park Parcel to the future Greenway Trail along the river. And so there's three options, the, um, foundation wasn't able yet to say exactly which one, but they, the proffers commit to building at least one connector trail in one of those three locations. Also, a new commitment that was not part of the original is to build a trail along this stretch of Jacob's Run, which will create a really nice connection once the county builds the Greenway Trail along the river. This will connect here and then connects up to Chris Green Lake eventually. There is an existing, um, there's easement that was previously dedicated by the foundation to the county, um, for the county to build this Greenway Trail along the river, so that's in place now. But the current Parks and Rec Planning Stop identified that there are some areas that will, based on the existing boundaries of the Greenway easement, would require the trail to be disturb more land and sensitive areas than is appropriate and would be much more expensive to build. So they've asked the foundation to agree to, uh, some flexibility and to consider or be willing to com- commit to expansions of those, of the Greenway easement dedication in the future to enable the Parks and Rec staff to build that trail in a more environmentally sensitive and cost-efficient manner. So those ovals and squares that you see there are just a dozen, it show where those areas are generally. And then finally, um, there was a study that contemplated a future shared use path along the, um, Route twenty-nine frontage. So in the event that that ever comes about, the proffers commit to dedicating an easement for that path in the future. Um, and sorry, finally is the, um, commitment to set aside a small area for a trailhead parking for the public who want to come and use the trails. Um, at any time, there'd be, um, a small parking lot, the exact location has not yet been determined, it would be at that site plan stage. Um, but in that, we think that's probably a, a good starting place for the, for the trailhead parking. So, and then we move on to transportation proffers. Um, the first is, and these are continuing, um, from the original proffers, is to construct two additional turn lanes when they're required based on a trip threshold event, so at a site plan stage, if at any point, um, the site plan and the trip generation estimates associated with the tri- site plan indicate that there would be, I believe it's a hundred and fifty trips during the peak hour, that that would trigger the need to upgrade, to construct those turn lanes. So they're tied to those trips and, and the impacts that would be created by the proposed, um, use, whatever that is contemplated by the site plan. The second is a commitment to provide cash to the county to help close a funding gap in the Airport Road, Berkmar Extended Roundabout. You all may be familiar with this, but just to orient you, obviously, the, um, where the circle is, that's the intersection of Airport Road and Lewis and Clark entering into the park. Um, the, this is, right now, Berkmar Drive Extended ends right here, and there's a, um, project to extend Berkmar to, it's to Airport Road and then have a roundabout constructed at that intersection. Lots of benefits of that project, both to North Fork as well as to the larger community and traffic generally. It will obviously enable, um, Berkmar Extended and then Lewis and Clark Drive to really function as a parallel road network to Route twenty-nine as was envisioned by the original master, uh, Places Twenty-Nine Master Plan. So the nice thing is that the foundation actually constructed this extension of Lewis and Clark Drive, it, it was completed, I believe in twenty twenty, um, they finished that connection, so now, um, already, one can go from Airport Road uh, north on Lewis and Clark Drive all the way to Route twenty-nine, which already functions very well as a connector road, but the completion of this Berkmar Extended segment will really make that, really complete that segment, and then the roundabout will obviously help substantially with keeping traffic moving and provide safety, and the foundation is dedic- in addition to committing to contribute two point five million to that to close a recent funding gap. They've also proffered to dedicate land and easements that are needed for that project in the area, so that'll help keep the cost down. Part of the cost overrun was VDOT factoring in, well, we have to buy land and buy easements from. Part of the cost overrun was VDOT factoring in, well, we have to buy land and buy easements from the foundation. So that's no longer part of that equation. And then finally, as Mr. Fritz noted, there's a commitment to provide, it's up to one point five million or or exactly that amount over time for future transportation improvements, once they have been identified by the county and VDOT. There's many studies going on right now and obviously many other projects in the pipeline in this area, not the least of which is, of course, the county's role with the new Rivanna Station project, which is really going to complement North Fork so well. So the idea was that rather than try and predict or commit to a particular improvement that may or may not be what VDOT and the county ultimately decide are the most appropriate, is that the foundation would commit to a certain amount of money to be put towards those future improvements. And it's would be payable in three increments when certain trip generation thresholds have been reached. And I would also note that it's not limited to just road projects. It would also, the funds could be used towards transit improvements, bike and ped improvements, or the like. So we tried to make that as flexible for the county and VDOT as possible. And I think that's everything I'll just show briefly, if I may, this, the completed. That white segment is the connect, the extension of Lewis and Clark Drive. The yellow segment was built at the beginning and the white segment was completed within the last few years. I probably should have had that slide at the beginning. And that also has a multi-use path along the entire span.
So thank you for the additional context.
You're welcome.
Commissioners, any questions? Commissioner Bibbins, let's work around the horn.
Thank you, Chair. So I'm, 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 I am, I am relieved that you've said that there, that the locations of the, of the dwellings and the types of dwellings are simply illustrative. Because I was going to ask, or I was going to suggest that in the consideration of that, they think about putting the multi, the multifamily dwellings closer to the green space. Because out of all the dwelling types you have there, those are going to be the dense, most dense they develop, and they're going to be the people who have the least amount of green around them. So the single family, I assume they'll have some sort of green patch around their properties. The duplexes will have some, some green patches. But I thought the whole idea is to, to give the, the families who have or the individuals have the least amount of opportunity to agree to put them closer to the green patch. So I'm glad to hear that you said that. I, I have a couple of other things, if I might. So in, first of all, I should say, say, say this. This is one of those places that's in our county that I'm very fond of. So I just need to say that. I'm fond of it for, and I'm particularly fond of it now that you've put the, the, that secondary road there. I think it works. I think it's living into what it was expected to be when Mr. Rose came and gave the vision in ninety, in ninety, in the nineties. I need to admit that at that time I was an employee of the University of Virginia and had designs on some of the space up there. But there was some craziness that it's too far away from things that people really don't use. But anyhow, I've been a fan, I've been a fan, I've been a fan of this space for, for a very long time. I will suggest that I'm a bit conflicted around the trails and their distance from where people are actually going to live. And the Dabney Grove is not close to where these people are going to live. The other piece that I'm conflicted on is that, given who's going to be moving in there. And there's a couple of buildings that already don't have signs on who's in there and you have to get invited and to even know that there's a building there. That, that, that area where you're going to still have office buildings probably doesn't want to have people walking around them.
That's part of the, for lack of a better phrase, hesitation or inability to commit to a price, precise location for that is they want to be able to assess that as they go forward.
And so I would encourage, as, as you're thinking, as, as, as you're, as the foundation is thinking this through, to try and make the area that is really the residential part of that community as, as full of opportunities as possible. So that there isn't any tension between some of the ABC units that are in the, in the, in the park and some of the people who are living in, in the area, that, that there is a livable, workable place there that works for them. Particularly given what we heard earlier this afternoon from, from staff about what the envisioned area across the road is to be. Okay, I mean, it's a piece of that, and it all makes sense to me. Also, as she comes to, to the table to tell us who she is, I will also challenge the foundation to make sure that the design there is, in fact, lives into being an innovation corridor.
Yes.
We see a bunch of projects, or I won't say for wait, I see a bunch of projects that just are not very interesting. And it's the same old, same old stuff. And so here, the foundation, along with the person who's going to come up and speak about this, has the opportunity for this to be something that's smart and that's forward looking as opposed to another suburban development, which we don't need.
Right, and, and that's precisely why we're here, for that very reason. And I will let Ms. Van Erstel speak, but just when, when and if you're interested, Mr. Bibbins, we do, I can highlight that the Neighborhood Model Area Application Plan does show trails and other amenity areas. It's a little hard to see unless, but, but we agree for that very reason.
I, I saw them and I, and I could see them. It's just that when we start doing all of this proffering on the, on the north side of the property, hey, it's going to be hard to get over there. If I were, if I were, well, when I become an older person, I wouldn't want to have to use my sort of, you know, walker to get over there. And if I were the grandfather of a young child, I wouldn't want to have to push a buggy to get over there. That would be sort of annoying on a whole bunch of things, particularly when I've got this rich field here that can have all these wonderful sort of activities. And, and not top lots, but multi-generational green spaces, Chair, is something that I'm pushing for, that we have multi-generational green space, which means we're going to have multi-generational people living in these places. And then I'll be quiet and let, and hear from, from Ms. Van Arst.
Thank you.
I appreciated your commentary, Deborah Van Erstel with UVA Foundation. Appreciate your commentary about that. It is true that some of our tenants in the park are related to the folks across the street, and that is a more restrictive user, and they have some sensibilities and sensitivities to those who are around them. Had that being the case, they have a lot of security within their own buildings and they are among this population. And their employees also want walkability, they want amenities and so on, and outdoor spaces and meeting spaces. And so we do provide that. It is true that on another diagram, you would see that there, around our water retention pond, we have trails there. We want to connect those to the newer trails that have been proffered in the future. And so we, and our original master plan or, or the one that was redone in two thousand and seventeen shows all kinds of connections to trailways and walking ways. And in an effort to create really a live, work, learn, play kind of a community, which is what everybody wants. So I appreciate the encouragement. And as it relates to the innovation corridor, that's something that I personally am championing along with the county, Green County, the city of Charlottesville and the university. And we absolutely want this to be a place of great innovation. So thank you for the encouragement there.
Thank you, Commissioner Carazano. I'll pass for that. Commissioner Murray?
I just kind of wish that everything came for us was full of so much green space and walk crazy. I did, I did notice in here too, that there's going to be impacts to isolated wetlands. And the way it was phrased is that, you know, like, ah, they're just isolated wetlands. I know we have no regulatory power over isolated wetlands. But I will mention that very close by, there are vernal pools along twenty nine, and those aren't important ecological community in Almore County. I don't know what kind of isolated wetlands you have, but just keep in mind that, you know, those, that is an important habitat in Almore County. So if you do have that habitat type, I hope you'll take that under consideration. The other comment that I've, I've gotten is, is that University Foundation does a great job using native plants. And a comment that was made as I, as I shared, one of the other projects that had been done is that, that they, that someone wished that, several people wished that the foundation would take things to the next level and use regionally native plants. So.
Okay. All right, Commissioner Moore? I'll come back up. Sorry. Yep. I didn't forget.
Okay, okay. First, thank you for a, a proposal. I know there's a lot of moving parts. I know this is a, a big part of our county's economic driving engine. And I appreciate the scale and the scope and the deft approach to, to the illustrations and all the moving parts. And I also appreciate some of the proffers, the Burkmar Extension, the Roundabout are, are key. And certainly the, the green spaces and trails are nice and, and the whole thing has a lot in its favor. I, I want to echo or plus one what Commissioner Bibbins was saying a little bit and, and ask. I guess this is still sort of in the illustrative phase. But again, thinking about where the parks are located, and I heard you refer to it as kind of a town center. But again, with the kind of tenants that are in there now, I don't know if it's going to feel like a town center per se when you've got like biotech firm and a, a security firm. It's not like a downtown in the same way. But yeah, just any thoughts on sort of the placement of, of a park space or third space for residents to kind of come together in those active ways?
Thank you. Yes, if I can go back to our. I think maybe this one is one place to start and just start with the trails. It's hard to see, there's so much going on. But I'll first note in the legend here is, you know, the multi-use path and a primitive trail. And so we've indicated the location of those, obviously taking advantage of the, you know, streams and the, and the green space throughout. But also, you know, really showing an intent and a commitment to have them really go all through there in addition to the existing trails that, that Deborah mentioned that are, I think this one is already here and there's an extension of it. Really just building on that in all areas, not, I highlighted the ones in the proffers because those are, those are the ones that had to be proffered. And obviously they're down there next to the river. So different kinds of trails. But then hopefully this helps in terms of this illustrative plan showing how this, again, this is just an example of how it might develop in terms of, you know, having, for example, a hotel here at the entrance, some office, some multifamily throughout, obviously some retail stores. And it's really not at a scale that shows it very well. But throughout the neighborhood model district would be
Pockets.
Pockets and open space. And the, the very last page of our plan set is the code of development. There's so much going on and probably having that at the very end, maybe we should have had it closer. But that governs how the neighborhood model district blocks will develop. And so it'll be like any other neighborhood model district application that you would receive as a rezoning. There are requirements in that code of development about how much open space each block has to have. They have to have amenities, there are setbacks that regulate. So all the rules are in there. They're intentionally flexible to provide, whether it's multifamily or townhouses or another office building. But flexible, but yet requiring all of those important components that make it a town center and a, a nice level place that's attractive. So does that help?
It does, thank you. And I wanted to ask also just a little bit about the water and sewer. I spent some time on the ACSA board and I know that's kind of the, the upper northern edge of the service area. And it's mentioned a little bit in there, but I wanted, if you could describe us a little bit more about the not insignificant improvements that'll be needed in, in water and sewer to, to make this work.
Sure, there, and I know the foundation has been working and their civil engineers have been working closely. I will disclose, I've not been involved in those conversations because our firm represents the Rivanna Water and Sewer Authority. So I wanted to stay out of that. But I know they've been working with them and planning and make, it's, a lot of it's, at this point, as you can imagine, sharing information and plans. There is a proffer in, that has been in existence since, I believe, in some form or fashion, since the original ninety six, that talks about if you have a particularly large water user planned that prior to site plan approval, the authorities have to confirm that there is sufficient capacity. But as you also may know, the, both the Rivanna Authority as well as the County Service Authority, both are planning and beginning to build significant improvements to the community's infrastructure, the community water supply plan. They're getting ready to build the pipeline that will connect the South Rivanna Reservoir to the Ragged Mountain. Actually, the foundation has been working very closely with them and recently conveyed easements for the pipeline and land for a pump station. They're also about to start projects to, among other things, build a second water pipeline across the Rivanna. So that if the existing one were to fail or haven't, for whatever reason, they have a redundant. So there are lots of plans in place for a redundant supply water system as well as to expand capacity. So those are big, expensive projects and they take time. But I know that they've been working together to coordinate those things. So I hope that helps.
It does, it does. And I also wanted to ask just a little more, I've, I've got, I got questions, Mr. Cliff. This is the last batch of them, but it's, it's sort of a batch. I, I was rereading some of the, the news stories about, about President Ryan's commitment to being great and good and to build a thousand to fifteen hundred affordable units. And, and it looks like we might get two hundred-ish here. And I was just wondering how this, you know, when, when you're coming in at fifteen percent affordable, how that fits in?
Sure. Well, first, we hope that two hundred is the bare minimum. It is a range, two hundred to fourteen hundred.
I'm sorry, around two hundred affordable, if you
Oh, sure, at the, at maximum buildout. Yes, you're correct. Yeah, so part of it is that this has been, as perhaps you know, and implied that the third location that the university has identified for one of three locations for their affordable units in the long term. And so the plan is that as soon as, if and when the zoning is in place, they will start a process very similar to what they have been engaging in with the development and nonprofit housing community in their, with their two other projects at Piedmont and Wortland Street closer to town, very similar, they'll work, put out an RFP, work with both market rate and affordable housing developers, figure out what works best and where. They very much hope that there will be far more than two hundred affordable units here. Especially because to meet the goal, probably there has to be, right? Unless a fourth location is identified. The challenge, of course, is like everything else, trying to commit to a certain number of units at this point when they haven't yet started that process. They didn't feel it was appropriate to ask the nonprofit affordable housing developers to do a market studies and design plans and so forth to help them figure out how many affordable units can we build here when we didn't have the zoning in place yet? So we certainly expect that will come, is, is a challenge to commit to it. Foundation's not a residential builder developer, so it's not their area of expertise. They're going to need to rely on the expertise of those other builders. But based on the amount of interest that they received for their first two RFPs at the other sites, we're pretty encouraged that there'll continue to be a lot of interest in both for-profit and nonprofit housing, such that regardless, there'll be hopefully more than two, two hundred. But it's challenging to commit at this
They were at the ZMA stage now. And so, yeah, when I, when I read that, I was like, you know, the, the foundation is, is qualitatively and quantitatively very different from an average developer. Why are we just kind of doing the minimum fifteen percent at eighty-eight percent AMI here? It stood out to me and I thought, could we, could we get more at this stage? But I'm, I'm hearing you say that at the ZMA stage, it's really more of a best to add that later on at, say, a site plan stage.
Yes, exactly. Thank you.
Commissioner Moore?
I'm good.
Commissioner Fireholt?
Yes, thanks, Ms. Long. I enjoyed the presentation and I'm actually encouraged by seeing residential being added into the, the in, you know, the industrial park, whatever we want to call it, North Fork. Because I, I think that the sort of, the era of just having great big business parks with big buildings is, is, is kind of going away. And I think that people want to live and work close to where, where they reside. I would say that I just wanted you to elaborate a little bit more. I'm trying on the transportation part in terms of multimodal. So I'm just thinking about if I live in these, in any of these units, how, and I happen to work in one of these facilities. How easy is it for me to ride my bike to work? And is it only riding the bike on just a bike lane along a busy road? Or do I get to have a bike lane through the woods to my job, just trying to get a sense of what sort of the biking infrastructure is? Because it, it, it's commutable by bike, which is not true of a lot of places. And then the other thing I'd like you to comment on is we have sort of commercial and office in there also, which I think is great. But can you say a little bit more about the commercial that's envisioned? Because what I'm hoping is if, 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 like, if I live there, I don't have to go to Route twenty nine for everything I need. You know, that, that I can actually You know, that that I can actually get some simple groceries or cup of coffee or do I mean, I know you were not like leasing buildings to commercial clients at the moment, but just tell us a little bit more to give a sense of like, how convenient would it be to live there in addition to that transportation question? Thank you.
Sure. And if I may, I'll go back to slides. Let me see if I can find the right one here. Actually, I think it was the one I ended up on showing. There. So if, and I'll see if my cursor will work. If, so this is roughly the location of some of the residential areas. The white dash line is the existing shared use path, and you can see here in the corner. So that is, as I know, you know, a shared use path, meaning built to accommodate both pedestrians and those on bicycles. So that each can use it. So if you wanted to commute from your townhouse, say, in this location, there would be a sidewalk, at least if not another paved trail, perhaps to connect to the shared use path and allow you to ride your bike here to the town center or in to a future employer located in one of these other blocks. So the, let me go back to an illustrative plan too. Probably the one at the very, there we go. Again, this is just an illustrative plan, but intended to show that throughout, even in the areas that are not yet developed, that there'll be sidewalks throughout and I don't know that we show any future bike lane, bike trails or bike lanes, but the concept is, for all the reasons you indicated, that it would be bikeable and walkable and and really support that type of a community. So as they move through the site plan process, I know that will be part of each site plan will be identifying the sidewalks and other trails and amenities that would support multimodal use as well as there are existing transit stops there. The foundation has a lot of experience. They ran up until COVID. They had a shuttle bus that was available to be used. It's also within the area of the future or soon to be coming micro cat transit program that should also both support the residents and employees at the park, but also the future residents will support that program by increasing ridership, we hope, for that program. With regard to your second question, we've tried to be very flexible in terms of those types of commercial uses that are permitted in order to provide the types of conveniences that you expressed an interest in. And we think probably all future residents will have an interest in things like a coffee shop, restaurants with outdoor cafe seating, perhaps a small drugstore, grocery store. Childcare center is one that is envisioned. Obviously, there's a lot of work to be done and and no definitive plans yet on any particular stores, but those are the types of things neighborhoods supporting commercial uses at appropriate scales to provide those neighborhood services.
Thank you. Glad you mentioned childcare. That was one of my questions. But Commissioner Firehawk, do you have anything else before opening a public hearing?
No, I just, I think it would be neat if I just say that if you if there were sort of a bike share program or something. When I worked full time at UVA, we had bikes that we just kind of kept and they didn't belong to anyone. We just rode them to the library and over there. You know, it's informal, but we need to have something like that. So if I worked in one of those research facilities, I could hop on a bike that wasn't mine and ride over to the store. I don't know. Just thinking, it it could be a really neat community in terms of being self-contained to some degree.
Absolutely. Like an e-bike would be, you know, an ideal location for an e-bike hub or right, you are brave enough, the scooters. But those can get you around pretty fast. So.
I haven't gone on a scooter yet, but yeah, an e-bike I do.
All right. Well, with that, thank you. I'm going to open up the the public hearing. I don't have anyone signed up on an official sheet, but is there anyone here who would like to speak, sir? You may come on up? And it says that you please share your name and general address. And you'll have three minutes. Thank you.
All right. I'll see if I can keep it within there. My name is Valentine Theodore Cruz of VT. I'm a resident of Airport Acres, which is just ever so east of that beneath D one in the area by Lewis and Clark. Now, my concern is with all this development and the infrastructure that's going to come in. Our house was built in the late fifties. We're on Willamseptic. So will we have to connect to or will we be forced to connect to the Willamseptic because all this development? Number two, with the traffic circle that's proposed on Airport Road, that whole road is also kind of graded for a second lane. Is there going to be a second lane added to it? And is it going to take out the woods behind our house? And then also at D one, someone mentioned a hotel right there by the the airport road. What kind of height restriction is there going to be? Because if it's much more than two or three stories, you're going to be looking in in my backyard. So we're almost directly behind the fire station. So they're pretty good without running the siren, but sometimes you get a rude awakening at all hours, depending on which way they have to go. That's just, you know, the luck of the draw that we picked the place. But my concern is, you know, this is a great idea for for a lot of reasons. But it's also an eight hundred pound gorilla behind us. You know, I've retired. So I don't want to have to move again, and I don't want another mini Megalopolis in my backyard. So I want to make sure that that there's some sort of the woods are kept and and the roads are kept at, you know, absolute minimum. And it would also help the people that live there that they don't have to contend with two, two lanes of traffic. But tha- that's my concern is you know, I just don't want to get stuck with this. And, you know, what do we do? I can't afford to to have to dig up, you know, to connect to the sewer and water. So that's that's my bit, and that's my concern. So thank you.
Of course. Thank you. Is there anyone else that's here that would like to speak to this topic? Madam Clerk, is anyone online who would like to speak to this topic?
No, sir, there isn't.
All right, I'll invite the applicant to come up and respond to what's been shared in five minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. I hope I I won't need that. First, thank you. Those are good questions, and we're happy to have the opportunity to address those. The first regarding whether they would be forced to connect to water and sewer, that's not anything I'm aware of that there would be a requirement for that, but nor am I really able, were able to speak to that. But I maybe let Mr. Herrick weigh in on it, but I don't believe there's any connection. They would be able to do their own thing and the foundations, all the development there would be connected to the water and sewer system. With regard to the future widening of Lewis and Clark Drive, that is part of an eventual option for the foundation or frankly, the county or VDOT to widen it. When it was extended, there is already the the necessary land and right of way that the road's been graded already to accommodate two additional or two additional lanes, one on each side. If in the future that's deemed to be appropriate to do so. So there would not be any more tree clearing needed for that or even more significant grading work needed. In addition, although it is fairly difficult to see, I will point out that there is a buffer that is required that is on the application plan between Lewis and Clark Drive and the backyards of these Airport Acres residents. So that will continue. It is so should not, there there would be no reason to need to grade into that area anyway, but that buffer is a commitment on the application plan that would be binding. There is, as I noted, the ability to have, among other things, hotels and others in this area. There is a building height of six floors in that location. Certainly, that would be, that's the maximum, perhaps be something less than that. So that I believe the hotel room limit is two hundred. So in that location. So happy to address any other questions or comments as well. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you. Counselor, did you want to weigh in?
I'm not aware of any changes proposed for water sewer service to neighboring subdivisions as a result of this application.
Thank you. Any final questions for the applicant before we close the public hearing? All right, with that, we'll bring it in to us. Commissioners, what's your pleasure? Any topics you want to discuss in greater detail than that you've heard what you've heard?
Chair, Chair, I would just, I would just mention one of Commissioner Firehawk. So so with the extension of Barkmar Drive and assuming that the the circle there at Lewis and Clark Drive comes together, an individual would be able to go across to, I think that's called Hollybrook or Holly something Square, whatever that shopping center is over there. I don't know what it's called. And so they would have a Harris teeter. They'd have the full suite of things which are over there. They'd also have the ability to come all the way into town on a multi-use path. Because Bark Barkmar Drive Extended would go all the way up to that circle. So a person could, if he or she decided to commute from there and come all the way into town. Now, that would be someone who I would assume would be in a triathlon. But given that that, you know, that we have lots of those kinds of people here. But you would have the ability to have that alternate means of coming into town from all the way up there in Northport, Norfolk, all the way into town on that one road. And so that would be, I would, I would suggest that would be a significant win for 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 many folks who would like to use an alternate means to come into town, but do not want to come in on twenty-nine.
Observation. I wasn't aware of that. Anything else? One comment I might have is regarding the affordable housing and understanding this is at the baby stages, just making sure that it is spread out through the development and not so much a a unit or block of affordable housing where everybody knows that's affordable housing. So you know, to blend that tastefully into the plan, I would just note that for the record. Any other comments or topics you want to discuss in greater detail? I don't see the little yellow hands. I think Commissioner Firehawk is okay. Yeah. All right. She's okay. Anybody prepared to make a motion?
In Rio, I can do that.
All right.
I move to recommend approval of ZMA twenty twenty-one dash sixteen with the proffers included as attachment two and the application plan included as attachment three.
Their second?
My second.
All right. Any further discussion? All right, here and none. Madam Clerk, could you call the roll? Madam Clerk? Mr. Secretary, you called it all or?
I'll do the role instead for.
All right. Thank you.
Commissioner Claiborne?
I.
Commissioner Carizano?
I.
Commissioner Bivens?
I.
Commissioner Murray?
I.
Commissioner Moore?
I.
And finally, Commissioner Firehawk?
I.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. I want to thank the applicant for a comprehensive presentation. I would thank the commission for a rich conversation. And so we wish you the best of luck. With that, we'll move into committee reports, if there's any.
I have one.
Commissioner Bivens?
So we had the combined CAC meeting last Tuesday. Thank you.
Fill us in. Fill us in.
Well, I will say this one thing. This is really interesting. I I I've come to understand that a lot of people don't understand how roads get built and who's responsible for the building of those roads and how long it takes to get a road built, even though these are individuals that sit on the CAC. And so I will say that I was really pleased that the topic for this particular joint CAC was about. While some of it went was a was a bit too too micro focused, I will say that. Because I you could see people were just like having to take in an enormous amount of information, which I I would suggest was new for for many of them and how complex it is. The complexities of getting roads built in 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 a county. But I have to say, I think they walked away with some with having a a different level of appreciation that just because I say I want a road doesn't mean it's ever going to get built within a time that it's well defined because of how we're funded and the various levels in which which roads go go forward. And I also think there was an opportunity for to have a exposure to the micro transit option that's coming through, that's coming up twenty-nine and coming up Pantops. And to the degree that we can get that in front of people, I think would be very helpful because there was a lot of conversation about that afterwards. It didn't get discussed during the meeting, but it got discussed outside in the lobby. And people seem to be very, at at least, they seem to present a lot of questions around that that possibility.
Sorry I missed that meeting. I was out of town for work, but how often do all the CACs get together like that? Do we?
We don't have an opportunity.
Typically, once a year.
Okay, figures. All right.
But i- isn't there? So what's happening October thirtieth?
October thirtieth, was that the invite? Are you referring to the invite I sent about the micro transit?
Yeah.
Yeah. So that's separate. That's not all CAC. But does relate to Commissioner Bivens' comment about micro transit on October thirtieth is our official kickoff celebration kind of thing for micro transit. I sent you all an invitation to that in your email. You all could attend. There's not going to be a discussion of business, so you would just be in the audience. So it's not a problem if if members of the the commission all attend, so we don't get together and discuss it. But this kickoff is happening at Martha Jefferson Hospital. And then that's the start of our two-year service. We can already start downloading the app that that's on. And I'm sorry, this isn't really committee report, but a good update for everyone. And so just as background, this is a micro transit service that acts similar to Uber. We will be doing a a pretty significant outreach. So our public engagement office is in gate is working on radio spots, social media spots, and and putting out that information on how to do this. But you download an app. You can order a ride in the areas for this include essentially the entire Places twenty-nine development area and the entire Pantops development area, including the fact that you can go back and forth between those two. So you can go over to Martha Jefferson on this service and catch a ride. It is fare free. And for for the the two years that we will have the demonstration project on. And this is a really significant new transit opportunity for the county. So encourage you all to show up or if not show up, utilize the service if you get the opportunity.
And and it's free. Wow.
And it's free. It's free as free.
Any other committee reports? Mr. Firehawk, do you usually have one?
Unfortunately, the Historic Preservation Committee did not meet quorum. Even though they they thought they would have it. So I went and sat there for half an hour for no reason and they got a scolding from the chair. So.
Hopefully, they fed you dinner. Any any other committee reports? All right. With that, I'll go back to Mr. McDermott for two items, review of the board supervisors meeting from.
We have a.
You have one? One report.
I can give the MPO tech up to you. Let me just find the notes I have from that so I can remember what happened a few weeks ago.
That it?
We're going to come back to him. I think he was going to give an update on the MPO, which Commissioner Carizano sits on, but so does Alberic.
Gotcha. I think I missed the first half of the message.
And I I missed the, I could not attend last week. So.
Got it.
I would love to hear his update if we have.
All right, we'll we'll come back then. So we'll move to items seven and eight on the agenda.
So item seven, sorry, the seventeenth was actually the joint meeting. I know that listed on the agenda. The eighteenth was the actual board meeting. And for once, there were no land use items on the agenda that evening, surprisingly. So I I didn't have to sit through the the evening. So it's a pleasure for me to get a Wednesday off. There were legislative priorities. Obviously, the board met and had other discussion, but nothing related to land use or any decisions the PC has made. As far as AC forty-four update, we are preparing to come back in front of you all on November fourteenth with our goals and objectives for housing and economic development, as we got the the preview on earlier from JT. And there is now a a survey available online for those two items, similar to the last one. We've opened that and we're We've opened that, and we're going to keep it open through the rest of uh this year, this calendar year, to continue to collect feedback. Um so those are really our focus. Of course, we continue to move forward with uh preparing goals and objectives and starting to scope out what we're going to do for phase three, which is uh development of the action steps. Uh so the really detailed work um and and fun work, I think, of uh the comprehensive plan is is coming up.
Thank you for that. That was that was December fourteenth.
Uh, November fourteenth is when we're here. Oh, and um I'll also point out that uh it early in November, I believe, November fourth, I believe, is the date we are, we are doing an online uh public uh engagement opportunity, uh similar to what we did last time, an online open house where anybody can join for this period of time. Uh we'll have breakout rooms for different topics. You can move around and ask questions. So uh that's coming up, and I will make sure that gets advertised um and that you all get invites to that if you want to join into that online meeting.
The fourth.
Yes, and this is four.
Saturday the fourth.
No, wait, no, that wouldn't be right. Sorry. Let me pull this up before before we move on. It is not the fourth. It is the sixth, sorry, si- uh November sixth. It's a Monday night, six to seven thirty. Um and I will get the link and invite to you all, so you you are welcome to listen in on that.
Okay, thank you. Uh go back to the MPO report?
Yes, uh Albert Kreenaplan, uh county planner. So I was attending at the MPO tech. We did not have a quorum for that particular meeting. It's not all your fault. People are missing. Actually, was actually had to be um, I actually became chair of that meeting since the the chair was out as well, so I kind of upgraded to that role, which was interesting. Um but we talked about, we had a presentation from the consultants for the Long Range Travel Plan about uh public management, how they're doing prioritization, um measure weighing for different aspects of that plan. So we got a comment on that and kind of give feedback. And then we had a presentation uh from the MPO about smart scale round six and some of the changes that the CTB, the Commonwealth Transportation Board, is making for those. So we whenever some of those changes and again, give our feedback and our our thoughts and some of our concerns about the change that might be happening. Um and then we also had a presentation about the transportation analysis zones. So that was um also interesting as well. And then we eventually just gave roundtable updates and then concluded. So no, no official, I guess, decisions happened since Quorum was not met, but we still had a good discussion about some of the issues that are going on. And that is all.
Yeah, thank you. As we move to new business, uh item A, uh Mr. McDermott, you have a update on that one?
Uh, yes, I do. We um have settled on the date for the joint PC board meeting on uh developer incentives. Uh this will occur on uh Monday, December fourth. Must have been where I got that number four meeting. Uh but on December fourth at uh one thirty till four o'clock is the time we're going to be holding that that joint meeting. We are working on uh scheduling the the speakers and and everything and the location. Uh my my um impression is that we're not going to hold it here at Lane. We've got an off-site location uh that we're that we're looking to hold that. So um I'll be in touch, but this is the idea that we're going to hear from uh our housing professionals and learn more about how we can utilize developer incentives to increase affordable housing development.
All right. And how about B? I was looking at them in the reverse, actually. So the overall planning commission, Charlotte Planning Commission joint meeting.
Yes, the joint meeting, I uh actually met with the um city uh planning department today or or neighborhood development services and including the secretary of the city uh planning commission and um we are looking to try and hold that meeting early in twenty twenty four. Got a lot going on for the next few months uh here. So uh that's probably going to be the the first time available for that. And I will be uh reaching out uh the chair and vice chair to um sit down with the chair and vice chair in the city to try and plan that out, what topics we want to cover. Uh and I plan to be able to hold that meeting that uh inner community meeting um in November to prepare for the January, February timeframe of uh of joint meeting between both planning commissions.
Good deal. And in the Affordable Housing and Development Incentives joint meeting, that should be a hold on your calendar already. So please do let staff know if you you don't see that. Is there any old business? Any items for follow-up that?
I have one. Um
Yep.
Madam Clerk would like to say hello for when I give her a second, since she'll be returning soon as well.
We always have time for Madam Clerk. Put her on.
Hello, everyone. Uh my computer is not working, so I'm on my iPad, but I wanted to say hello, and I will see you at our November meeting, and I'm looking forward to it.
Yes, yes, we can't.
I can't wait to see you all.
Goodness. Oh, we gotta have a cake or something here. Okay, I'll get a cake.
Let's see what we can do.
All right. So um no, we can't wait to see you. And thank you for supporting us from your home as well.
Yes, it's been, it's been too long, and I'll be glad to be back to see you all.
All right. Okay, I like the, I'll give you some money for the cake. Don't worry about it. Talk to you offline. I got you. All right. Any other items for follow-up? No? All right. Well, with that, uh we'll be adjourning until Tuesday, November the fourteenth, twenty twenty three. Is there a motion to adjourn until that time? Ooh, all right, is there a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, my votes and I, any opposed? All right, meeting adjourned.
Thanks.
Thank you all.
Thank you.